I talked to him.
Don't do that, just speak louder.
Sorry, I didn't turn my mic on.
The changes that Craig has suggested give a little more flexibility to an individual homeowner in configuring their lot in relation to required fire hydrants. We have a rather strict standard right now, and what Craig is proposing is actually we go back to the standard that we had before our current standard. So it is still, though, within keeping of the wild line interface fire guidelines that we have, but it gives, with some of the houses being set back a little bit further in the property, it gives a little more flexibility and does not require, in some instances, a new fire hydrant to be placed at the front of the lot and thereby foregoing some of the expense, the building expense. So that's the gist of that.
One minor adjustment to that, Wayne. I think the current one requires that the hydrant be, if it's more than 150 feet, it's placed further back in the lot, and this allows it to be, to stay up at the road. Craig mentioned that he didn't want them to have to go into the lot to hook up to the hydrant, said he wanted them to be able to do it from the road. So that's mainly what it does is puts, keeps a hydrant along the road.
Yes, but it gives a more depth for the home before that requirement is.
What is it, real far back then, currently that you have to put the fire hydrant so many feet up, and then they have to have that hammerhead?
Correct.
So this eliminates the need for that?
If it's within a new approved distance.
I believe 250.
250 feet.
There's cases of two homes that are on larger lots that are farther back, that their driveways, they had to put a fire hydrant halfway up, the driveway and the hammerhead. So it's quite a significant expense.
Well, if it's more than 250 feet, they still have to put the hydrant and have the hammerhead.
All right, so do I have any comments? Not here in the room. Jody, do you have any hands raised?
Because we're still talking about this later.
Yes, yes, this is just the public hearing. Okay, hearing no comment, we'll move on to item number two. This is proposed change to the city development and construction standards, 2.8.6 on fire hydrants. And how does this differ than the?
It's not.
We just, the one, we just had to add the section to the city code, and the other one is?
We're modifying it. But we're also, we want to include it in Title 10, which is the zoning ordinance, which everybody looks at to see what the requirements are. Right now, it's, I won't say it's hidden, but it's in development and construction standards, which mostly pertain to subdivision. So we want to put the same wording in both places so that it is clear to everybody, particularly the home builder, what those requirements are.
So the, so number one that we just heard was whether we, is just adding Title 10, including it in Title 10. Now we're hearing comment on changing the standard in the development and construction standard section. Same information. So do we have anybody raising their hand on Zoom to comment on this number two? Okay, hearing no comment on that. We will move to number three, and this is a proposed change to city code, Title 8-5-1, water requirements and policies. Would you like to just summarize that for us also, Wayne?
This puts into code a practice that the city has been doing for some time relative to allowing the city to bank water rights. So when a developer has a large subdivision, they can, they can provide water rights to the city and then convey them by deed once that plat reaches a final stage. But it allows the city to kind of hold on to those water rights and preserve them for the developer. And it, so the change is the process of allowing that and doing that. That's the essence of what that change is.
Okay, all right. Do we have any comments on that number three, Jody? Okay, hearing no comments on the water requirements. Let's move to number four. This is a proposed change to city code Title 10-11-2A and 10-11-2B, accessory buildings, parentheses, outbuildings. Wayne, batting the ball back to you again.
In our existing ordinance having to do with accessory buildings, there's a separate setbacks and criteria for them in and of themselves. The ordinance shows R140, R180, and an incorrect description of PUD, and R119. So somebody says, well, I've got an R1, one lot, a one acre lot, it's not included in this setback schedule. So what this does is amend our ordinance to include the R1-1, the 2 acre lot, to make them the same as the R140 and the R180, which are similar. Square footage. And it's just combining those, as well as the PUD into the one acre and two acre PUDs. The R119 is not affected, and so it's just adding some of our existing city zones in the table.
Okay.
Where they've been absent.
All right, so we don't have anybody here live to comment. Do we have anybody with a hand raised that would like to comment on that change? Jody, no? Okay, hearing no comment on that, we will move to item number five. They proposed change to city code Title 11-5-9, non-motorized trails and walkways. Wayne? Thank you.
This, this was looked at as, our existing, just as a couple of short paragraphs that we have. And this is, this is not, was not intended to be all encompassing, it was just to take things a little bit further with our, regarding our trails. And setting up some, some standards for, for the use of them. We received information back a little bit from Sherri Berger that Parks Trails Recreation is working on a more comprehensive ordinance. And so in light of that, the planning commission recommended to the city council that we tabled that particular change at this time until the Parks Trails and Recreation comes forward with their more comprehensive ordinance, at which time we'll take a look at that. And what we propose, and verging the two, if they're, if they deal with things differently. And so that, that was the essence of this one. It was originally put into the codification process, but we withdrew it in order to facilitate the codification. So it's not, it's not critical, but we don't want to let it languish. But Sherri Berger indicated that within a short period of time, they would have a recommendation to the city council with this new ordinance. So that's the reason where we recommended that it be tabled.
Okay. It is on our agenda tonight for the public hearing, so if there's somebody that would like to make comment from the public, we'd be happy to hear from them. But as Wayne said, the city council will likely not be considering what is necessarily here tonight, it will be changed before. Jody, have you got anybody that wants to comment? Okay, Sherri, you've got two minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Jeff and I are actually traveling, so all my notes are at home.
Sherri, just one minute.
But I just wanted to.
Sherri, we can hardly hear you. Is there, I don't know if Jody needs to turn up your volume or if we do, hold on.
Well, I was having trouble hearing you as well.
Much better.
Is that any better?
Yes, awesome.
I raised my volume. Okay, I raised my volume. Just Jeff and I are traveling, so all my notes are at home, not that I wanted to say anything different tonight than I did at the public hearing for the planning commission. PTR does appreciate planning commission putting off any action on this. I think it was the last city council meeting, we were commissioned, PTR was to make a recommendation on the parking on Deep Forest Circle and the condition of the switchbacks, and to make a recommendation based on what other cities are doing regarding motorized and non-motorized vehicles. And we have put that information together, and our meeting a week from tomorrow, we will be putting together our recommendation. They will submit to planning and to the city council, providing we have good attendance and we have a quorum. But we appreciate the opportunity to put this information forward and look at it in a comprehensive manner with regards to the whole trail system in Woodland Hills, the general plan, the switchbacks, the development agreements, if there are any, like with Four Seasons, or what the church has done as far as their trails go. We're trying to make it as comprehensive as we can. So we just appreciate this little extra time. Thank you much.
Right, thank you, Sherri. Any other comment? Okay, moving on to item number six, the proposed change to city code 10-6-4, the time to appeal. This change would align the city code with state code 10-9A-704. I know we've received one written comment on that. Jody, have you received more than one? Okay, so that will be added to our minutes. Is there anybody in attendance that would like to speak about this change? Do you see anybody? Okay, hearing no. Who's? Oh. Just, just leave it on. I think, I don't think it'll hurt it. Okay, let's try that. All right, hearing no comment, we'll move on to item number seven. This is a proposed, proposed change to city code Title 10, adding a section on architectural and landscaping standards. Wayne, would you like to speak to that, so people understand what that's about?
We currently have very little in our ordinances about that topic, landscaping and architectural standards. This is a, this was going to be part of the codification. Planning Commission had discussed this and had a public hearing on it over a year ago and developed a few standards. Some things were taken from the old WOPA CCNRs to incorporate into the ordinance, but again, it was removed to facilitate the codification process. But it, again, it's not all encompassing, it just gives a few standards to guide the city in this area, and it can easily be added to as time goes forward if, if we want to. But it just kind of included some basic aspects to agriculture, to architectural and landscaping criteria.
Okay, and this is, these are things that were, used to be generally handled through WOPA CCNRs.
Some of them.
And so, okay, all right, so do we have any comment on this change, proposed change, Okay, hearing no, and seeing no comment on this, we will move on to number eight, which is the proposed amendments to the 2021 fiscal year budget. And do we have any public comment on that? Okay, Sherri?
Is that, is that budget online somewhere where we can see it? I'm concerned about Parks Trails and Recreation, and I know that, I think initially, when you guys met for your retreat, 20,000 was budgeted for Parks Trails Recreation, but my understanding was that 20,000 was for chipper days?
Sherri.
And I'm not quite sure how.
Sherri? Yeah, but this, right now, we're talking about amending the budget that we're operating on this year that ends on June 30th.
Oh.
So we're just trying to bring, that's okay, we're trying to bring real spending into line with the budget, so.
Okay, sorry, I was thinking about future spending. Sorry.
That's my question.
Yeah, that's what I.
I haven't seen this.
Neither have I.
I was looking for it too, and I thought, did I miss it?
Yeah, I, well, I just got a.
It was sent to you on May, or on April 14th.
Oh, well, that's ancient history.
There has been one change to it since then, there was some money left over that was unallocated in there, but at the request of the finance committee, and I believe they presented it to city council, we moved that money to the camera security system. So you guys have an updated version of your budget in your emails right now. And that was majority of it, there was some other shuffling around, but that was the big one.
But.
So I'm missing the public comment on that.
Yes.
We'll talk about it very much.
Yes, so anyway, so that being said.
But I think, okay, but to be fair and to Sherri, since it wasn't posted, there was no incentive to give comment.
Right, right, well.
I think it would be better if we posted it.
I agree. And then took more comment. I agree, I absolutely agree.
And his mic might be dead, or he's, his mic is off, we can better hear him.
I was, I was leaning back in my chair. I'm just saying, I think the public, we should post this publicly before we have public comment.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, they have no way of knowing what they're commenting on.
I agree, and I, I'm sorry, I thought it would, it had been posted, and I think there was a breakdown between three of us somehow that managed. So are we able to hear comment on that again at our next meeting, Chris?
Yes, I think we might have, well, we, I don't know if we have the post again, but it would probably be wise not to vote on it this time. You just need to vote on by June 30th, so give it a couple.
Right, we don't, we're not scheduled to vote on it this evening anyway, but will you make sure that we put it on our next agenda, Jody, so that we can hear comment again at, the public on that? Okay, and then we don't have anybody that wants to speak tonight, do we? Because if they do, they're welcome to. Okay. All right, so I will close our public hearing, and we will move into our work session for May 25th, 2021, for the city council. And the first item on our work session agenda is a report and recommendations following the planning commission public hearing. Wayne, would you like to just sketch that out for us?
I think Wayne's mic is dead.
It's off.
But it's been fading all night.
Do you need a new battery?
To kind of summarize those areas that we talked about, part of our public hearing, and the recommendations have been made to the city council on those items with a little bit of a background on them. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you, if you have any. Is that not working?
It, it sounds like it's dying.
Is this better? Can you hear me, Chris?
Can you hear him at all?
Can you hear me talking here now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We've kind of summarized the, the same areas, except for the budget that we had our public hearing on, and we made recommendations to the city council of those items, and with some brief summaries. Be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have regarding those particular items. We're trying to pull back into our ordinances, those things that were, that were removed, and to, to, again, continue to go forward and do what we need to do to round out the Although they won't be part of the codification for a little bit, but they will be, if they're adopted by the council, they'll be part of our ordinances.
And can I speak to that for just a minute, Wayne? Because I think that's actually a really good point. So codification is obviously the process where we take our ordinances and then we move them into one master document so that it's easier for people to read and understand it's, you know, searchable, all that. We just went through that process, and a lot of what Wayne is now going through, and when I say Wayne, the planning commission, is there, there, there were things that had not been passed by ordinance that got added into the codification. We pulled those out, now we're reintroducing those and having them go through the ordinance process. That is great. That is transparent, that makes it possible for people to know everything that's going on. There's no rule that says we only codify every five years. We, we could codify in another six months, we could codify in three months. It totally depends on us and how often we feel like we've passed a sufficient number of ordinances that it makes the codification process worth it. So I would actually recommend that as, not only a council, but as a city, that we, that we look at codifying more often, as long as it makes fiscal sense. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say on that.
Do you have to do a cost is every time we codify? I'm sure it depends a little on the work.
Well, I mean, you're, all lawyers raise their prices, right? So it, it depends on when we do it, how often we do it, and so forth. This last codification, I want to say was like 8,000. We did just get another bill, and that other bill was from the work that we had them do to move things out, and, you know, anyway. And that was what, $1,500 roughly, the other bill?
Yeah, I can look at it real quick, I got it right here.
So while he's looking at it, I think that's a good point, Dave, that we need to do it more often, especially since we're doing this, what I'll call catch-up. So we're going to have a lot of, you know, just like we've got eight items on here, I don't know how many of them really are, we're going to vote on or whatever tonight, but yeah, we're going to have more. And so I would think that in three or six months, we need to do another codification to, to, to get everything current and balanced.
And I think that we need to maybe think of that as a budget item to, to put money in there so that we can do it however often we need to do, not wait long term, because that was a big headache. And I mean, David, you're the one who had the biggest headache out of all of us.
Well, there were others too.
I know, lots of people, I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, is the seven years or whatever it took to finally get it all into place, really, we would have spent less money had we just, you know, now going forward if we do it more regularly, as a regular maintenance type budget item.
Yeah, I, I, that's kind of my point, is I think if we do it more often, it'll not only keep our codes more current, easier to use, but it'll also be less expensive. And again, American Legal Publishing, they can work in batches. So if we send them like 15 to 20 ordinances, you know, they'll bill us for the two days it takes to do that, but then we're done.
Right.
And that's really nice, so anyway, just as a process thing, I think we ought to do it more often.
Okay. All right, the second thing on this work session agenda is a resolution appointing an alternate to the planning commission. Wayne, do you want to tell us what you have in mind for that?
In our ordinance, there is a provision to have an alternate on the planning commission. This alternate fills in in the event that one of the commissioners are not able to be there, but they're encouraged to attend as often as they can, and they can't participate in our discussions, they just can't vote unless they're part of, if somebody is absent, then they're allowed to vote in that person's absence for them, for themselves. So we've been a long time without a alternate. It can be a little challenging because there's not a lot for them to do. Again, they can participate, but we've recommended to the mayor, a name of a person who has some building experience and background, including doing some inspection work, he's a broker, he's had experience with some site plans, and we would like to, our plan would be to incorporate him in our site plan review process so that he has an ongoing responsibility there besides just coming to meetings if, if he's able to do that. So I think it would be a good, a good thing for the city to have additional voice, he's got some background in that area, and we would, we'd highly recommend him to be considered as an alternate.
Have you, have you talked to him at all?
I have, yeah.
Okay, so it's, so who?
John Wallace.
It's John Wallace that they're.
So I think he's also served in Eagle Mountain on the Board of Adjustments. I'm not positive, but, but some, something like that.
I think you're correct, yes.
So he's, he's got some pretty, like you've been saying, he's got some pretty good depth.
He, he is, he's semi-retired, but he's giving a lot of time to the city now, he's a voluntary, volunteer fire department, fireman, also, he's part of the Parks Trails and Recreation. And I think that would be a good, he could be our planning commission liaison with that committee and be part of that and bring information back to the commission relative to that where it's appropriate. And he's willing to take, continue to take those assignments.
Great. So do any of you have questions or discussion you want to make on that? Okay, number three is the proposed change to city code title, let's do three and four together. This is the fire hydrants. So we're just adding to Title 10, and then we're also making the adjustment in the development construction standards. Do you guys have questions or discussion you want to?
I don't have any on that one.
I'll tease here now too, if you want to.
I have a fundamental concern.
Okay.
In that we've basically got two.
Wait, hold on.
No, I think, I'm good.
I just, you know, from a structural standpoint of having two, two places that basically the same code is located, I have concerns with that and being able to keep them both current and, and in three to five years from now, somebody making a change to one and not making a change to the other.
Right.
And then we're out of sync.
Yeah, that's my. Yeah, that's my question is that with the codification, will they be linked digitally so that when one changes, the other one automatically changes? Or can we just make reference in Title X to the architect, I mean, to the development construction standards so that it's, if we, if we make one change, yeah?
And that in Title XI, in Title XI. Eleven on subdivisions, that's the way, if there's a sec, just a one paragraph, one sentence in there that says, "See Development and Construction Standards on Fire Hydrants." So we would propose that same kind of reference in Title X so that they know that there's, that this is also included in the Development and Construction Standards. But we don't want to change the wording. We want the wording to be the same, so.
Right.
It, it helps alleviate some of the problems that you're talking about.
Yeah. So if we're, if we're just going to have one of them pointing to the other, then I don't have a problem with this at all. I just would be concerned about having the same words in two different locations where we get out of sync and causes.
Agreed. Any other concerns or questions there? Okay. Number five, the proposed change to the city code, which is water requirements and policies.
Wait a minute, where are we?
Number.
Because we did three and four together.
We did three and four together, never ten five.
Yeah. I just have one kind of clarification. This has nothing to do with, with what, what's written here. I, it, it says, it says at one point here, it says, "The city currently requires .9 acre-feet of water for equivalent residential lot connection." Is, yeah, what, is that the same for a third of an acre as it is for five acres?
It is.
So it doesn't matter. It's the size of the lot.
To me, it seems like we should be.
Well, but, okay. So just, we've been through this discussion a lot.
I'm sorry.
So just keep in mind that if you have five acres now, there is always going to be an, yeah, you're only watering a small portion around the home. And I'm saying that generally because yes, there are some people who water all five acres. But then there's also people who don't.
That's right.
And who water very, very little or have everything zero-scaped or whatever. So, I mean, it, yeah, it's an average. It's not meant to be an exact allocation per lot.
My question is, is if that lot in the future then gets subdivided, but the initial lot had the water rights at .9, when they subdivide, are they required to do another .9 for that second lot?
I think, I think we do require that, yeah.
Yes.
That's part of the subdivision standards.
Yes. And we have audited.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And we have audited that number of .9 and found it to be reasonable.
Okay. One other kind of question. In, in Section 2B, it says, "In most of these cases, the irrigation company will charge a yearly carrying charge for the water right. This carrying charge will be calculated by the city who may require this fee to be paid by the water right contributor up front to cover perpetual charges." Is there any limit on how much they can charge us? Is there, is there some cap? Is there some formula? This seems pretty open-ended and if they want to be crazy, they could charge us fifty thousand dollars for this fee. I don't know.
They have a regular established carrying charge for all the water users in that particular system.
Okay.
And this, this protects the city. The city likely will not charge the, the provider perpetually for that, but the city may likely take that responsibility on once that water right is deeded to the city. So it'll be a regular budget item to, to pay on a regular yearly basis, usually that carrying charge for that particular lot.
Thank you. Just some clarifications, education for me mainly. Thanks.
We, the City Council. You, Plur.
We still have a carry.
Any, any swag idea on how much that is? Twenty thirty? Okay.
Because we can get water from anywhere, state.
Right. A year? Okay. That, that's kind of what I thought, but I just was curious.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Okay. Number six, the proposed change to city code about accessory buildings and outlets.
Seems reasonable.
Yep.
The, the one thing I would maybe add there is, would it be good to have maybe a, instead of adding them? I don't know. I just, I hate, I hate it when we have to change ordinances just because we've changed another part's code. I wonder, could there be a catch-all that just said, "Any zoning not listed is covered under this?" You know, instead of explicitly listing every single one of them out.
That's what we, Ellen, problems with codifications, all these little teeny things that were out of place and, you know.
Anyway, it's, it's a thought. It's, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with what you've done. I'm just wondering, you know, could there be a default case that we just say, "Unless otherwise listed, you are this?"
At the same time, I, I agree with that totally, Dave. Just, this can be an area of contention if it's not clearly spelled out. And so I, so I think there's value in both sides of it. I just don't know what, you know, I, I think it's something to, to think about in the future, not that we have to do. And I think that's kind of what you're suggesting, Dave, is that we, we think about how we can make it so that we don't have to tweak this every time we modify, change a zone. But yet, it's an opportunity for, for contention. I think that it's good to have it spelled out. So if we can do both at the same time, I, I think that's great.
Well, yeah, because if we add a zone, it's nice to have it included.
That's right.
You know, without having to go back on.
As a thought, I mean, if you're going through this tonight, if you wanted to have a default to the R1-1 category, which is one acre and a lot of our, most, a lot of our lots are one acre, that add a statement that if, for example, physical facility zone is not covered here at the accessory building, but added if, as if it's not otherwise mentioned, it would fall into the R1-1 requirements. So that, a thought to do tonight and leave that be in the future, rather than come back in the future and add that, add it now and see how that goes for the future. If there's a need to change in the future, we can do it, but add that now as a, as a default.
Okay. Good suggestion. Okay. Number seven is changing the trails and walkways code, and we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission that we table that. Are we good with that?
Can I just ask, ask a question about?
Yes, but your question cards are just about used up. I'm kidding. I'm totally kidding. Yes, absolutely.
So when we talked about having the temporary close of the switchbacks to motorized vehicles, we didn't talk about when we'd come back and revisit that on opening it back up. And so the question I have is, are we close? Is this, is it now time to open it back up? I know that Fire Chief went up there a week or so ago to where the avalanche was. We don't know what's beyond it because I don't know that anybody's really gone beyond that point.
Vehicles could get past that, couldn't they? I mean, that's the problem.
At that time, you probably could, I mean, I wouldn't want to. We just turned around right, right there where the fence was.
Yeah. So, so my question is, is it time to open it back up to motorized vehicle?
And do we have to say that you'll have to turn around where you get to that spot?
Yeah, yeah, and that is where a week and a half ago, so it may be.
Is that, is that spot on city property?
No.
No.
So the, the concern I have, and I had it when, when we, I don't know, I just have a hard time feeling like we actually have as much control as we're exercising.
Well, I think we have.
We have an agreement with the DNR that we, that they're good for us to keep making the trail and kind of make it consistent through the whole trail.
And, and as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Not the trails, only on state land and city land. It doesn't go all the way to federal.
Okay.
Yeah. So if we, if we look at the whole trail, the city, the portion that's on city land is probably two-thirds and the por, portion on DWRs maybe a third. And so we, we have the majority of the trail that's on the city property.
Okay.
City has more than that, Bob. It's probably seven-eighths.
Okay. But that, that is, that's even more of my point is that we have the majority of the trail that's on city property and so, and DWRs said, "Yeah, you guys take care of it." They're kind of trusting us in that. So I think that we need to try to be good caretakers of it.
So can I, can we, wait, or trust you to give us a recommendation, Craig, when you think it's safer? Because the, part of the reason was that the ground was so wet.
Yes.
And so.
The trail isn't one at all. You need to go back up and see how much more of the fence. We can only see the very top of it. The fence is up with ice.
Okay. So will you keep your eye on that and come back with a recommendation when it's wise? Okay.
Wendy?
Yes.
Wendy, I think too, one of the, one of the issues is in between Switchback Six and Switchback Seven, where the avalanche came down, I call that the sunny stretch. And that's probably closest to the narrowest point in the trail. And once you hit the avalanche, there is no way for a, Jeff and I call them moon rovers. And I've also had somebody else tell me to turn around the four-wheeler when you're up here. So you'd have to back down. So that, that's a major concern and could be a potential liability for the city. Part of that property is DNR right before you get to where the avalanche is and it's marked. But if the city were to put up a gate, let's say at Switchback Six, that would prevent any motorized vehicle from going any further and having incident and not being able to turn around and perhaps backing off the, the edge, because that's where the edge is really steep. So that's a major concern.
I would suggest that we maybe approach that whole thing a little bit differently. And that is that we put a sign at the beginning that say that, "Travel at your own risk." Something like that.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I think we're, go, go ahead.
Okay.
I received a phone call from a resident today who asked about the switchbacks and they complained about some handmade signs that were on the property that they did not think were the city's. That said, "No motorized vehicles crossing, no going up here." Different. Yeah. And he said it didn't look very official and he was not happy with it. Let's just say that. He said if the.
I got a similar call a week and a half, two weeks ago. Yeah.
We said it's a city official.
Business, it's a city logo on it, something that makes it actually be.
Okay.
Homemade.
So, so if we open up the trail, that gets taken care of, as I understand it. But yeah, I think, I think that, that we do need to look forward to next fall when we close it again for, because the trail will be wet and muddy and that type of thing. And so I look forward to, you know, having signs that we can just put up to cover, to make it look more professional, more authoritative and not.
Okay. Yep.
Whatever.
Although we, yeah, okay. All right. Yes. Number eight, bringing our, changing the time allowed to appeal, aligning us with state code and so.
So I have a question on this one. And I, anyway.
Well, but before you ask your question, I'd just like to say that we have come up with this suggestion, well, we, we're proposing this on the recommendation of our city attorneys.
Yep. That's fine.
So just, I mean.
The question I have is that in the letter that was sent to us by a resident that essentially opposed this, their opposition fell because they felt that it would place an undue burden upon our city employees to produce documents. Now, the question that I have is, to file an appeal is different than actually hearing the appeal. So to file an appeal, you don't need documents. You just need to file it and make the appeal, right? Am I wrong in that?
You do need some documents.
But, but they're fundamental documents or just the, the portion of, of the, where we sign the paperwork saying that?
Well, you also need transcripts of the, of the hearing.
Also need transcripts.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyway, I, I guess that was my big question and.
But you're, it's not the same as, as the appeal itself.
Now, when the appeal gets heard, that's when you need to have your evidence and you need to have your documents and so forth and so on. But that's, that's different than just being able to file the appeal to say.
You have to, to file the appeal, you have to have enough evidence, chapter and verse, to be able to define the issues. So we're appealing because of this, this is what the fact-finder said on that, this is what we presented, just that, that's the kind of evidence you need.
Okay. That, that was, that was my big question. And the, the other thing I, I would say is, you know, as I hear the keys typing back there, one of the things that we're trying to do is make our minutes more real-time as opposed to, you know, a few weeks later. And so at least as far as the minutes are concerned, those should be available as soon as we leave the meeting, at least in draft form.
That's important to note, that they're draft.
Yeah. And you can watermark them saying that they're drafts, so that makes sense.
And I think that the important part of this is that we're aligning with state code. I think that's an important aspect for us as a political subdivision that we are part of, that state's got to.
If I could make a comment, I, I do think there's some validity to that argument. Maybe what we ought to do is go back and see if we pass it, go back and ask our attorneys and say, "Look, what, what are some things we can do to take that burden off? Whatever burden it is, you know, can we, can we audio record it and, and make those available immediately?"
These have to be made within three days.
Yeah. So, so then they go get transcripts themselves. They'd have to type it, but you know, that's their problem. So just some things like that, that maybe we can just ask and say, "How do we make it easier on all parties involved?" Because we also don't want to make it too difficult for our citizens to appeal. And if we do that, then we can do some things to make that more reasonable, fourteen-day more reasonable period of time.
Severn? Oh, sorry. Do you want, Bob? Go ahead and I'm over. Severn?
I, I was just going to ask if I could put Paul on the hot seat.
He's used to it.
As, as an attorney versus a layperson, when I, when I read this residence, what I would call a very adversarial-formatted letter, does all that really boil down to is that they're just giving us a heads up that they may do something in the future? Or does it really carry any weight at all?
I'm not sure what the motivation is. Looking at the substance of their arguments, they're not unfounded arguments, but, but in my opinion, they present one side of the equation. There is another side, and when you put that other side together, fourteen days makes more sense. But we still ought to listen to their arguments and say, "What can we do to improve the situation?" The fact that the state has a fourteen-day, the state is ten days.
State's ten.
Yeah.
And we're, and we're adding four days on top of that.
Okay. So the state is ten, I know it's saying minimum of ten days, so the state was minimum, huh?
Right.
Minimum of ten days, okay.
Yeah, minimum of ten days.
Now, the state also has resources that we don't have. So they could get away with maybe ten days.
Well, but keep in mind, that's what they're recommending for cities.
Yes.
Is a minimum of ten days. Is a minimum of ten days. It's not the state saying their minimum of ten days.
They're recommending cities.
That's their ordinance, and they say that a city can be no less than ten days.
Now, that being said, you could still have, you could have a fourteen day and still have somebody make a legal argument that that's too fast. They could say, because you have constitutional rights, access to the courts, et cetera, they could say, based on the city's systems, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you can't reasonably get an appeal done in that period of time. So I, I think it's good to be aware of those issues. I just think we can handle it with some.
Is, does the state have an upper and lower parameter, you know, lower of ten? Does it have an upper parameter of so many days? It's unlimited? Okay. I was, for some reason, I thought it was something, that there wasn't upper limit, but, okay.
Okay. Anything else? What did it talk about there? Okay. Oh, yes, Severn, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jody. Sorry, Severn.
You're on mute.
That's all right. You guys really have finally hit upon what my concern was, and that was that the planning commission recommendation was not to go with the state's ten days, but our recommendation was fourteen days. And up until that last discussion, that issue had never been raised.
Thanks. And I think it's good to be reminded, our planning commission really does, their due diligence and their recommendations does, and we do appreciate it. Doesn't always get said, but it's felt. Right, thanks, Severn. Um, all right, number nine, adding the section on architectural landscaping standard.
I did send you all a tech, uh, email during that meeting. Um, as you recall, during this session, we had HB ninety-eight that dealt with a whole bunch of things with regards to, um, procedures and et cetera with regards to building. It was vetoed by the governor because of a technicality with FEMA, and it came back at the special session last week it passed. It's HB one thousand three now, government building regulation amendments. So I sent that all to you, and I think that we need to send this back to the planning commission with this in mind, because it does, um, say that we cannot, um, have, uh, building exterior requirements except for waterline interface ordinances. Um, we're no longer allowed any city in the state, this is, the cities were not very happy about this. This bill was not something, I mean, it was worked over at least six different amendments, so it's better than it started. But that is one thing, historical districts are excluded and, um, and waterline interface ordinances have to be able to be in place, but you can't just say this, unless it's an HOA, you can't say we have, you have to have brick, or you have to have this square footage, or you have to do this or that. Those are all off the table now. And so I would suggest that we table this and send it back to the planning commission with this in mind, so that we can make sure that we're not stepping on, because builders are going to come in and really take this to task with, um, cities who don't have it right.
I think it says that. There's no, there's no restrictive criteria, as long as it meets fire safe.
But we have to say the language of the bill. So that first one, these architectural landscape standards are established for both exterior and interior design, for both building and structure. That would be in violation, just because we can't say exterior architectural standards anymore.
Then the context of another section there, it does address that. It says that there's no restriction. Well, I'm sorry, there is.
Yeah.
Corrugated roofing, or corrugated tin roofing can't be used as well as shake shingles.
Right.
Shake shingles is addressed.
That's fire wellland, isn't it?
Yeah, that's all, that's all of that, but I'm just saying that I think that we may need to be extra careful, because it's a heightened awareness with the building industry right now, that cities, that's why this bill came to be, is because of the days to, this is the one that says you need so many days to get a building permit, and you need this and this, and it's a huge bill. And, and so it's an all encompassing that came from developers, and they're going to be extra sensitive to cities who are complying or not complying. And that's how it came to be, is there were certain cities in the state that weren't complying with, with a little bit, so they took a big, big chunk in there saying cities comply.
So, so when I, when I was reading over this stuff, saying that, that there was a thousand square feet, um, and two-car garage, those things are now all off the table?
Those are type, some of the things that they're, that, that's why I wanted you to go through, because they even added stuff as a last, the special session was the nineteenth, so just a few days last week, and they added stuff and changed it again since we looked at it. So I think it's important to see how much they've added to this bill, and so I sent you all the copy, but just so that we make sure that, and, I mean, fences were in it, and some other things were in it. So it's, it's, it was pretty preemptive.
Do you know that thousand square foot, if that, we didn't know if that was a, allowed to be a criteria or not? Karen, off the top of your head, do you know?
I have not, I mean, I glanced through the whole new bill last week, but I didn't dissect it. So I sent it to, to all of us, so that you could kind of see, um, where it went with that. But, um, yeah, there's a lot in it. So just so you know that it's, uh, it is a long action. It was, it was the twenty-fourth of May, so that's when it went to the governor. So yesterday.
And, and the governor signed it this time?
Well, let me see what the status, it's to the governor. I don't think he's had time to sign it.
But I think he's basically said he will.
He would, yeah. Let me check.
I guess I'll have to talk to his.
Yeah, house to the governor was, was yesterday, so it's in the governor's hands, but it hasn't been signed, but it's pretty well, pretty well going to happen. So I just would suggest that we hold off on it until, until you've had time to really look over it, make sure that we're in compliance and that our wording is in compliance.
Can you send that copy to me?
I sent it to all, all of you, and to you, and to city staff, because there are some things with building permits that are in there. There's some, I mean, it's, it's a long bill.
It's very long.
Yeah, and it encompasses a lot of different areas with regards to, um, building regulations.
Yeah, it talks about slope, just, just kind of.
Nothing like the state getting all up in city business.
I know. So.
The state who really gripes about the feds getting involved in the state business.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to mind turning around and getting all up in city business.
So I just, my recommendation is we table.
Okay. The, the state who keeps telling us the best government, no, I guess that's the leak. The best government is the closest government to the people. Anyway, okay, all right, um. Okay, number ten, the wording of the contract for road funding improvements, Ted. Do we have Ted here? I don't know about the rest of you, but this man is our rock star.
No kidding.
And the information we got from him.
I'm gonna name my driveway after him.
Yeah.
Let's name the next street, Nicholson Way.
Oh.
Oh, no, don't put my name on any of this.
You did a great job. I just.
My mom always said, full names and full faces always appear in public places.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to be the silent partner in these deals. Um, so, yeah, I don't know, I guess you guys all saw the email. Um, we put the project out to bid. Um, this is for the remaining water streets, and as you recall, the last meeting I presented, we took the cost that we had from the water project, but that included some overheads and other things from the general contractor as well, because in this case Geneva's a sub. So that's how we developed what the project cost would be. So our engineer, the estimate at the time was just over four hundred thousand. We put it out to bid, we had four contractors that, uh, provided bids for the project. Um, the low bid is Geneva, uh, who is currently doing the road work on the waterline project, at just under three hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-nine thousand and some change. Uh, so yeah, I ended up coming in under, uh, under our estimate, and I, I think we got a pretty good price for it all. So, um, it's, it's good timing as well. This was kind of worked out to be a best-case scenario where we can just keep them going, and I think your guys' timely action in deciding to chase this road project and put it out to bid helped, because we've got a contractor that's here doing the work, and that's where we saved a good, good chunk of money, was in not having to re-mobilize another contractor. So, um, anyway, so I just, recommendation would be to the council, if you don't have any questions, would be to, to recommend awarding the bid to Geneva, and then we'll get them notified, and they can just continue working in the city until all the roads are done.
Does this help the, 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 uh, water guys keep ahead of, uh, of Geneva because we're expanding and putting like West Lofer into this mix? Does that, uh, you know, because I was reading Corbett's note where Van Con's struggling to keep ahead of Geneva?
Yeah, yeah, and it, it could. They are fighting to stay ahead of Geneva. Some of these roads, I'm not sure that they have got services done in all of them, but should soon. So in the event that Geneva does catch Van Con, this could provide an opportunity for them to move to another street, if it's done, and work on that street while Van Con's finishing their work. So, uh, it could provide that opportunity of, if, if you choose to award it tonight, then we'll get them a notice of award and get all their performance and payment bonds and contracting everything in place, so they can just move forward.
So one other thing, I know that it's been super inconvenient having the fiber lines hit, but at the same time, in a way, that's been a blessing, because we're finding out that the fiber lines weren't dug deep enough in certain places, and, you know, just like a car, you want to catch the problems while it's under warranty, and I think our fiber is still under warranty, and so it's good that we're catching those problems now as opposed to ten years down the road. So.
And I, I believe I've heard, Corbett may be able to better confirm this, that Utopia is now trying to go ahead of the paving contractor, just to see if they can figure out if there might be other conflicts or issues. I don't know what they'll do about it, but.
Yeah, I was on the phone that night, on that Saturday night till midnight, with their CEO, talking about this situation and saying, hey, we, we don't really, we know you don't like it, but we don't like it a lot. And so whatever you can do, because we don't, we know that we're not liable for that, and that's between the two of that, you know, the contractor and Utopia on blame game. They complain all they want, but we don't want our fiber disrupted like that again, because it's, uh, it's serious, it wasn't just an inconvenience for a lot of people, and, um, and so it was their livelihood, those that work from home, et cetera. And so if they can get to the point where they can figure it out prior, then great, and I'm hoping that they really are working on it.
Hopefully, like Dave said, they can clean it all up, so it gets to the depth it's supposed to.
Which also means, you know, it'll last longer, and, I mean.
That's with our new roads.
Yeah.
With our new roads, it's now.
You know, interesting you say that, whenever you do a UDOT road, whenever they repave, it's a two-year moratorium, meaning no one can cut into that road for two years after they.
I like that rule.
You too.
Let's make it five.
Corbett's like, yes.
Dora was, Dora will say yes also. He hates patches.
Yep.
So Ted, on this, on the, I mean, roads and water are going hand in hand, and I know that, uh, we've all had the discussion, and Corbett has explained to us numerous times about, you know, we've saved, what, quarter of a million dollars by having that dirt sent up the hill, um, by the water tanks, but now that's getting pretty full, and, um, I just want it to be on the table, that I think that we need to stop hauling dirt as soon as this phase is over and find either a new location or put it in our budget that it's haul off.
I'd like to validate the comment that it's getting full, because I thought if we did the, uh, the other mitigation problem, whatever that's technically called, that we're going to need a lot more dirt up there.
Watershed ops.
Watershed ops, okay. Is that correct, if my understanding is correct, Corbett?
No. No, we don't need any more dirt up there.
So this company's down the first sprang at that basin, and unless we do something different, we're going to haul off.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that information.
And that will be included in the project.
So, so do you have another location in the city that you would prefer, or do you just go to wherever?
With that, with that thing I sent you, that guy, would that work in, in getting some of the?
No, they'll take it, but you gotta get it to them.
So there's a, there's somebody in Salem that requested some dirt, but.
But it's the same thing, you're making truck time to get it there.
To Salem.
We're taking it to the tanks, because we're saving truck time, I take it. So if we take it to Salem, you're going to pay. So you want to put that into the project? Do you want to do it in the project?
I think we need to.
What would be the time difference? I mean, I don't know where in Salem we're talking about.
Well, and.
You're probably, I mean, you're at least an hour around.
The Salem thing may work for a while. I, I, I think we need to cover the more general point of we're having to haul it off instead of hauling it within the city, and.
Well, if. If, um, if we're going to have to haul off for the, for this other project, are the feds going to pay for the hauling off?
Yes, on the, on the watershed ops, that will be hauled up, but only for the project, not the extra that we're shoving up there.
They're not going to pay for the extra, Corbett? Okay, and, and that's still going to create wear and tear on the roads? So do we do it one time, two times, three times? I don't know, I don't know the answer.
Who live in deep forests is having non-stop trucks since last, uh, last, um, August, every time, and at first it was just until the mitigation's done, and then we started the water project and the road projects, and so it's been pretty well non-stop for those, for those residents in that road, going back and forth, and I, I just think we need to be a little considerate of that.
But it's not just the forest.
Right.
Because if you haul it out of town, well, then those guys are going to think it's beating worse than it already does.
It's already a mess.
Yes.
It's only six years.
I mean, to me, the biggest concern, you take a loaded truck down, well, then those guys, and somebody else is going to die.
We need to get Corbett a mic.
We don't want to hear what he just said.
Okay, good.
It's scary.
But Ted, what do you have to say about all of that? Because I know you just were trying to pipe in a second ago.
Well, like Chris mentioned, I couldn't hear real well what Corbett was saying. Um, but, so, there's, there's a couple ways to, it, it, you know, you can handle it either direction, right? So if you haul in town, it, it saves a little bit of money, you let the contractor know, and usually what we do in bid documents is we let the contractor know the haul site's within a quarter mile of the project center, where we give them a distance, and that helps them determine their cost for the project. Closer the haul location, the cheaper it is for them, and then they can do, essentially do more project for the same amount of money. If, you know, if you want, if, if we ask them to haul out of town, certainly that's, can, can be done, we just let the contractor know, we don't have a dump site, you have to find your own, and that plays into the cost, and, um, it may be, you know, it's going to be a little less project that can be done, but you're getting the dirt out of town. Kind of like Corbett said, either way, you're going to be on city roads, and as we know, the city streets up here are not in great shape, so any direction you go, they're going to have to drive on city streets, uh, for any project we do. Um, so it's just a matter of, I guess, picking the, you know, the lesser evils, for lack of a better term to use there. Um, but in the mitigation project itself, um, since that project has not been defined, so to speak, yet, it is still in existing conditions, and the mitigation project or the federal government and our CS will pay for whatever the change is from existing conditions. So if there's dirt there, we got to haul it off, it becomes part of the project.
That's basically what Corbett said. Is there a way to, uh, to add into this project repairing roads that are damaged due to the project?
I, I believe as far as mitigation work goes, you probably can. Um, if we do mitigation, now in the, in the, let's step back, in the road projects, um, they have, they've, we've already got the cost for that, which includes the local haul for this Phase One and Phase Two A, uh, which is. uh, which is just maple and settlement, portion, a small portion of maple and that settlement. As far as mitigation project goes, I, and, and, and I don't know, we'd have to look into a little deeper, but I think if you cause damage because of the work in the mitigation project, you certainly can repair that damage. So if we have to repair some roads, I think we can get that in the mitigation project.
That's, that's good to know.
All right, any other discussion on this side? Okay, let's move on to number 11, the proposed change to city code, ten dash eight dash four, which would omit reference to stories.
So as I understand it for this one, this is essentially fixing, something as a result of our last vote for the building height ordinance and just basically cleaning up a definition here. Is that correct?
Yep.
Instead of leaving it with zero stories, there's, it's not part of the equation. Stories is not.
Stories is not, just 35 feet or, and 30 and 35 respectively, depending on your roof.
Correct.
Yeah. And I think we said flat roof, technically they call that low slope roof. They're not technically flat because they have to have little slope, but I've been reading up on this, but I think that's important. I've had a few phone calls from people who were being concerned about the word stories, so I think this will be helpful.
I thought they wanted stories included.
Some of the residents who called me who have more like a split level or have smaller little teeny levels, it's not a full story. Thought that they might be at a disadvantage if they, if they build a home that doesn't have a lot. We have a couple of people who call me that are elderly that don't want a, a whole other story, but they want these little teeny split levels that it's not going to go over the 35 feet. And, um, I, I think so, they were concerned about the warming. So I think this is important stuff. Cause we're going to stay within the, the guidelines of, of the height.
Chris says you sound way better now, Bob. He can hear you much better.
I'm being quiet.
I think these mics go off very quickly.
Yeah, well, I just got new, uh, a whole new set of rechargeable batteries, so we'll try those and see how it goes.
Well, the battery was in here was pretty old.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
We're still working through these technical things, but I think we're making good progress. All right. Any other questions about the stories?
I noticed in the attachment that the, the diagram is, is there. And I thought I remember a lot of feedback or back and forth saying that it was omitted. Is that an addition as well, the diagram, or is that, was that in the original?
I've talked to Jody about this and those were originally put out, so they stand. We're not, we don't need to add to it. The diagram is there. That's part of the, uh, description.
Well, you included this item was from the last time. The only thing you did is just change the stories around.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, in, in my conversation with the folks is that they, um, they, they felt that it wasn't specifically called out that, that you needed to refer to, to, to the diagrams. And the piece of paper that they got did not include diagrams. But as we submitted it to the county, we included diagrams, therefore, I gave them the, that information and they were going to go validate that.
Okay.
But I, I think the diagrams are very good. And, uh, and they, uh, eliminate a lot of miscon, misconceptions about what we're trying to do here. And I think they also, when you look at them in total with the, the words, specifically, uh, the 35 degree and the buildable lot, uh, buildable area of the lot. If, if you don't take things out of context, then things are covered very well.
You good? Okay. All right, um, number 12. This is a request to provide culinary water to Cory Hyatt and Michael Griffiths. Wayne?
I've been in communication with Jason Hanks, who's kind of the caretaker, son of Ted Hanks, Hanks people. They have two wells on their property. And one of them is, is servicing, um, the Hyatts and the Griffiths. They have for years. And he's trying to get water rights squared around with their properties and, get them in, in sync with the Division of Water Rights, the state and so forth. He's talked to Robert Nelson. And, uh, Robert is willing to, uh, have two connections in the force, in his four season subdivision that would allow then Griffiths and, uh, Hyatts to connect into that and put them on city water. That process, they will provide the point nine oh acre feet to the city for that, as well as pay the impact fees. Uh, Robert, Robert Nelson and, and Jason will work out the point nine oh between the two of them, but Hyatt and, uh, Griffiths will pay the impact fees required for that water connection. There's nothing, as we've looked at things, it looks fine. There's no, no issues that we're aware of. We just wanted to make sure the city council was aware of that. But for the time being, they'll be, they're outside the city limits. But I think eventually if developments go accordingly, they will annex it to the city. Of that. And there's been talk to them about doing.
There's, there's talk from several people on 11-200 that are on this side that are now in Woodland Hills Ward that are kids, that are, have asked questions about how do we annex in?
All of Lofer Canyon.
On that whole side. And there's the four lots that are county, starting with Hyatt that go down. And the rest of them are part of Elk Ridge at this point, but there's several that I think want to, uh, talk to the city about potential annexation in. And the county, we still never figured out that boundary line between Woodland Hills and Elk Ridge along that side that we discussed a couple of years back.
Right.
So this might clean it up for everyone.
So I, I think this is a great timing to do this. I, I'm very much in support of doing this. And I would go a step farther in that I would, and I don't know if this is the right organization to do it, but I would, request the planning commission look at responding to those questions of annexation in that area and see what we can do to begin the process.
It's a long process.
It's about a six month process.
Yeah.
To, to, to go to all, I mean, both cities have to agree, the county for the county property. So, and there's, there's some things that have to take place, but we might want to see, I'll give you the names of some of the people that have contacted me.
Well, I think they've contacted, uh, the chief also, if I'm correct.
Yeah, we might just have a meeting with those people and see if they're interested because I think it's all or nothing. I mean, you can't just pick two, one house and two houses and then leave two in Elk Ridge and come back. And I know when we talked about it before, didn't we achieve that there would be some joint maintenance of the road and, uh, uh, snow removal, et cetera, kind of an agreement between the two cities.
I, I just think it, uh, starts to put us in the, the right mode for community development.
Yeah, we, we will get on that again, the, trying to clean that up along Lofer Canyon Road.
And, and if, if it's, if it's easier just to do bigger one, I would suggest that we also look at that, those areas on the north side of 11-200.
Between, between Woodland Shadows and that intersection there on, of Lofer Canyon and 11-200. Some of those haven't, haven't, they requested to use any of our water, like the Pokes and some of the others they've requested. So it might be, and they're all county, so the county might say, if we're going to take Hyatts and the others, we might as well take this little stretch too. Because they don't want these pockets in the middle of nowhere. Okay, so maybe we have this, have a meeting with all of those residents and see who's interested.
So a question on that. I know, for example, the Hyatts have typically irrigated a lot of their acres. They've got the orchard, they've got other things. The point nine, I know it's averaging out. If we're going to add a bunch of those situations, is that going to create any problems for us? Are we going to have enough water? I mean, I would imagine they're, they're going to self-correct a little bit because of the cost that's going to go up from the water. I think if you live along here.
Not Noel.
Cory, yeah. Oh, is that the Lofer Canyon?
But all of these little lots here, they're going to do point nine, so I'm going to average it out.
Corbett, is that, is that Noel's Orchard?
Wayne? You need a new battery.
So there's, there's a correction.
Okay.
So what I was told by Jason was that there was primarily interior watering that was going to be done with these two residences. There was no water, exterior watering or orchards and things of that nature.
And they're aware of our tiered watering pricing, is the case? I mean, they want in, but do they understand that we have tiered water?
Yeah, but they wouldn't be affected, well, yes, they're affected by the more they use, the more costly it becomes, but they're, they're fine with that.
Which I see as a self-regulating process.
If we do more than, if LAI did the study, they, this, the study came back and said the average irrigated acreage is 50 acres per acre. So if you use more water than that, there's a correction that takes place.
Like when the church.
The correction came back and said, look.
When you built the first building, we only required three, equivalent of ERCs, equivalent of the different connections.
Then over the years, the older buildings have been using a lot more water. So the church conveyed additional.
Six, an additional six water rights for the old building and nine, uh, acre feet. Correction that takes place and but they pay a lot more the more water they use anyways.
Okay, and number 13, our proposed amendment to the 2021 fiscal year budget. Do you?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that we table it and give it us at least.
Yes, absolutely. Do you want Chris to give you any more information tonight?
The biggest thing that I would like is I would like, um, a yellow highlighted one with the line items that had a change, some kind of a delta.
That would be wonderful.
I realize I could go through and do that myself.
Well, no, but it.
But it just makes it.
With better comments.
Yeah, I mean, it's a serious significant deviation, maybe a little bit of idea.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a couple of dollars, I don't care, but if it's.
Right.
If it's more than a few percentages.
Chris, we can do that, yes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get that done.
And then, of course, post that so that it's available publicly.
Okay. All right, um, the next item is a report from Deputy Thomas from the sheriff's office. Do we have him online?
He's on vacation.
He's not here, okay. So we will hear from him the next time. Still trying to get over how much he looks like my son. That just really flipped me out last meeting. All right, um, all right, public works update, Corbett. Let's hear about roads, the water line replacement Phase One and Two A, and then the tank access we kind of talked about. Hold on, do you have a mic back there? Oh, yeah, okay, I see it now.
As far as the water line replacement, the service crews have caught up to the mainline crew. Uh, they're done on Broad Hollow as well as they've been on, done, done on Spring, East Spring for a long time. They just finished the, the pressure test on West Spring and West Lakeview. And so as soon as they can get it flushed and the back T samples back, then the service crew will come back and start doing service laterals on West Lakeview and West Spring. They're almost done or finishing up right now on Valley View. They're getting up to the Woodland Hills Drive intersection. We're going to tear up the East Spring intersection at Woodland Hills Drive and do that tie-in tomorrow. Uh, everybody's aware of the school buses, the school district. All the residents have been notified. And then Thursday, we're doing the, the same thing on Broad Hollow at Woodland Hills Drive. I've been texting back and forth with the job superintendent and the crew foreman. And we're trying to get them to, they're trying to get to the point where they'll do the Homestead intersection on Broad Hollow as well as the Broad Hollow intersection at Woodland Hills Drive. But it's moving along.
Did, did we, um, so we got some public comment last, last meeting from, I want to say Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's her name.
Is there anything we can do from a city perspective when working with the contractors to make sure that we have better feedback? A better feedback loop, because I think she's done a good job of trying to communicate both with the builder and with us. What is happening is she's not getting any, she's not getting any.
I'm drawing a blank. I, I don't know what you're talking about.
About the, about the, um.
I think you might have been gone when she gave that comment.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
She had some issues with the contractor.
They tore out her sign. They tore out some things.
Yeah, they.
They put a lot of dirt in her coal boots.
And is that where?
Have now gone and repaired it.
They agreed, they had agreed not to mess up with some sort of structure on her, on the edge of her property. And when they came in and did it, the crews tore it up.
And Ted, isn't that something they would put on your, your link to your site and then you would address with the contractors?
So, yeah, if they want to go to the website, people go to the website, they can post comments. And then we can respond and address them. Um, that's typically how that website works, but I think, is she the one that sent in the, the comments? Is that what I'm thinking of? She had some comments, she sent in some issues that happened. Anyway. In, in the end, I, I guess the contractor has to restore, put back, fix as part of their finalization of the project before we release any of their final payments. Or we, you know, we withhold a retainage from them with each pay request of five percent. And before any of that retainage gets released, we validate everything's been repaired, fixed to the satisfaction of people. We did talk to the contractor about it last week, David, just. So it has been brought up with the contractor. He's aware that there was an issue. He, you know, they're apologetic, um, you know, things happen and they'll, they'll do what they can to get fixed and corrected. Check with homeowners to make sure they're happy before they walk away. I don't know whether specifically it's been addressed right now, but they will before they leave.
I just wonder, like, uh, similar to what we've got with the gates, where we've got a phone number that people can call. When we're doing major construction projects like this, could we have a phone number that people could call? And then maybe even before we release those final payments, we as a city be proactive and reach out to the homeowners and say, are you good? We're going to give you two weeks to bring up any issues before we release final payment. I don't know, something.
Yeah, maybe just one thing we did is we, we did put out a website. I know it's been put out to the public several times with contact information and areas that you can go post comments or feedback or questions. I don't, I don't know that we've had, the only question that was asked was one that I asked just so I could answer it. Cause I had to ask it and answer it so that people could get information. Um, so, um, you, you're right, it, it's, I mean, we, we, we try to take that burden away from the city as much as we can, but in the end, we will, you know, check it to residents and that's, it's, we walk around with the contractor as a, we do a, uh, substantial completion punch list where we walk around and identify everything that needs to be done before they can leave and get paid. And then we'll do a final walkthrough where we go verify everything's been done and everyone's happy. To some, you know, to a certain extent, I mean, obviously we can only make them happy for so far.
If I talk to you over, I, I text them that link in case they have specific questions that Ted and his group can answer or.
We're really not able to hear you, Jody.
It's Carrie. Um, and so that they, they can, um, either put their question out, Ted can answer or take it to the, um, contractor when they have their weekly meetings.
I'm afraid that if we send everything to Jody and Corbin, they're not going to have time to do their regular jobs either, but I don't know, I mean.
We've been keeping a list in the office of everyone that's called in. And Marcy and Lori and I have just been documenting, documenting their complaints. And we can catch up with Ted prior to the end of the project or, because Van Con comes in every Wednesday. We can catch up with them and, and see that prior to the end of the project, all those questions, their problems have been addressed.
I think the, the biggest problem with all of this is people see the contractor or they see the service crew leave and they think they're done. And they think that the mess that's in front of the house is going to stay there forever unless they say something. That's not the case. Before anything gets done, before anything is finalized, they'll go through, Van Con will go through and they'll clean up all the mess. But it, it, to me, it's super unrealistic to ask them to clean up every spot before they leave.
Right.
Give them a chance to get down the street and then they'll bring a dump truck back and they'll clean up all the messes at once, because it's so much easier and faster to do it that way. People just need to realize that they're not done. Just because they've left, they're not done.
I, I hear what you're saying, Corbin, and I don't, and I agree to an extent. But I will also say, having been, you know, one of the homeowners on one of these construction projects, they didn't come back. And so we don't, we need to be aware that we don't have a great track record on getting things all the way cleaned up. Even the fiber project, as much as, you know, Utopia did to come back in and try and fix things, there were still some things that were not done. And it's no big deal unless that's your house. And then it is a big deal. And so, again, I'm just saying, I think as a city, we can communicate that, hey, don't worry, they're not done, we haven't signed off. But we need to kind of do a double check and make sure that they've done their job before we give them that last check.
We're, we're weeks, if not month, maybe a month and a half away from even attempting to be done.
And fair enough.
Keep in mind that you've not had the oversight. You didn't have oversight on Utopia. You know, and so you're comparing something where it was just, excuse the term, helter-skelter. And, and now you've got Van Con who's got a contract that says, before you get paid, before you get that five percent that we're holding back on every payment, before you get that, there's going to be a final inspection. You're going to do your inspection first, you're going to go through and do your best, take your best shot at it, clean up everything that you can, then we'll do a walkthrough.
And, and I think that, what you just said, would be a great message to make sure the residents understand. Because again, they don't know that we've contracted with Van Con. They don't know that we've got all this oversight that we've never had before, which, by the way, just for the minutes, that's the reason we're doing it, is because of past problems. So we're, we are trying to improve, we are trying to get better, but we need to make sure that that's communicated very clearly, that that's what we're doing and why.
Okay.
Another question then, so how do we do that? I mean, we've got multiple ways, but do we have a plan to communicate that? My thought is the, the, the website should store all issues. So if, for example, on my lot, they came in and they dumped a bunch of stuff on the side that's ugly, et cetera. No big deal, I know they'll fix it. But if I had a place to go and say, yeah, they put a bunch of stuff in my culvert, it's really ugly, et cetera, I know they'll fix it, then it's logged. And when it comes time for them to go back and clean up to get that last five percent, they've got a punch list, for lack of a better word. There's a document, instead of having a bunch of angry citizens that say, wait a minute, we had no idea they weren't done, we had no idea there was this ten-day window where we had to speak up, we were going to speak up, we just didn't know when we were supposed to speak up. If we have the website, let them know, look, the time to speak up is when you notice it. And then just put it on there, and it may be that they don't come back and fix it tomorrow, maybe three, four weeks from now, but at least you've logged it now and it's part of the punch list program. Is there a problem with that?
Other than it's, to me, it's super redundant. Give them a chance to go through first. And that's what, that's what, that's what they're expected to do, that's the communication. They'll go through first and take their best shot at it. And they'll get everything cleaned up and then some. I mean, realize that before Van Con ever started, they went and videoed every single road that they were going to do any work on. So they know what it looked like. And if there's a question, they'll go back, if they have to, they'll go back and pull those videos up. But they'll go through first and take their best shot at cleaning up everything. And then we'll go through with a walkthrough with them and give them a punch list. But it doesn't make, there's, there's no sense in trying to give them a punch list now. Give them a chance to get the mess cleaned up first, and then we'll go through and fine-tune the punch list.
So maybe what we need to do is just, you know, make sure, which, by the way, I will say, I think the Facebook page, the weekly or so updates have been fantastic.
Yes.
I think that's been way better communication than we've ever done in the past. So I, it, it, it's a little, it's, it's hard to bring up problems when so much has been going so much better. So, but I still think it's important that we raise this issue. And so what I'm suggesting is that we communicate very clearly when it's that time. When we're at the point that, okay, we're within a week of substantial completion, now's the time, if you have an issue, please raise it.
Please put it on.
Can we wait?
Communicate that really well.
Can we wait and do that after they've taken their best shot at it?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So you tell me when they've done their best shot.
If you tell us, then we can get it out.
Then we can communicate it. And then we give the residents two weeks to raise any issue.
So they're supposed to be done by mid-June to beginning of, I mean, mid-June for, for the initial, and then they have those two weeks till July first to finish, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
So is that what we're looking at, Ted?
Before we move on, I just want to make sure that we don't, I, I actually don't think that, I want to offer a differing opinion on this issue. I think it would be helpful for Van Con to get it as it goes along. I mean, if I'm putting together my plan to go clean up everything, and I know there's these twenty-five issues that people have brought, to me, that, that's more efficient than doing it. Then coming back and then they say, oh, there's eighteen others, oh, now we've got to get everything back in place and go through the areas and hit spot those. Wouldn't it be more efficient to say, look, we know going into that final cleanup stage, we know that there are these twenty-five things that have been reported, we'll hit them as we go. Wouldn't that be more efficient?
Maybe I can offer this call if, if it's helpful, because I don't, I don't think it'd be a big deal. If we gave people the website and there's a comment box in there where they can go post a comment. If they want to go in there and just post any, if they have anything they see that they're concerned about, issues at their house, just post a comment and then we can track them there. That way, Van Con's not getting overwhelmed. And then in the end, if needs be, we can cipher through it and determine what we need to work with Van Con. That way, at least it's documented in a location that we can get to it. Now, keep in mind that this is a public website, so, you know, we, we encourage people to make them productive comments, if you will. So, but.
Just yourself, yeah.
Yeah, but, but if they want to go in there and post a comment, hey, my, my culvert's been filled with dirt and give an address, you know, we can track them there. And that's an easy way to do it, the website. I think we've posted it probably three or four times on the Facebook site.
Six, five or, five to seven times then on Facebook, and then we've sent out in other ways prior. And then also just I texted to everybody who asks me about it.
We can specifically send out another Facebook or city communication that if they want to go there and post a comment if they see an issue. And maybe with that same communication, we just let them know that the contractor is, is not done. They'll be coming back and cleaning up everything before they leave the site. But if you see something you're really concerned about, comment or note it on the website. And then at least we'll be tracking things.
So, so if we went in and basically if we said from today, hey, there's this website, you can go report now, but please also understand that they will, the cleanup stage isn't yet, Corbin, to your point. It's going to start and we'll have a two-week period to put comments in at that point too. So don't feel like you have to, but you can do it now, but you will have a window at the end to put in comments.
The biggest concern that creates for me is that somebody posts something and are they going to expect it to be done? Because now they've notified you that it needs to be done.
We have to make it clear.
No, we make it clear that the project, the project isn't finished until July first. But if you have any concerns.
You're logging those.
Log these concerns in and then it will be addressed prior to July first.
It will be considered or reviewed. I mean. Yeah.
That's a good point, Ted.
We, we may or may not be able to address it depending on what it is. If someone says, hey, my, you know, my roof's blowing off my house. I mean, it's probably something we want to address as this part of a waterline project. But if it's something we can review and consider, we will. And if we can address it, it's a waterline issue.
If they haven't, if you can't address it as part of this, if they've put something out of, of context of this project, do you still reply to their, their email or this, their comments so that they know it's been seen?
I can, yeah, I can.
I think that would be helpful if they know that it's been considered, but.
Or logged, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, I think that would be helpful.
I just usually put, if it's a comment, I just use it, but thank you for your comment. We'll, we'll take it under review or something like that, just so they know. We do these quite often in these public meetings where we have to address a lot of public comments and.
Yeah, I, I think recognizing that you've received it and then stating that it's under consideration are the two key points.
Yeah.
Okay, Corbin, anything else for us? All right. City council assignments. Doral is not here, but he sent kind of a email to, did you all get it from him about some of his comments? I would like to say that the, because this is, Public Safety's under him, that Expo, I heard was excellent, but not super attended. A couple of things. Number one, I think that our fire and EMS people have really tried to keep this city event kind of pure so that we're not doing other things. It's really helped to fire and Public Safe, you know, EMS things. And I think that's really very wise. But I'm thinking, like, looking forward to next year. It seems to me that we should try to do a better job of advertising. And, I mean, one of the things is we've got the big banners down at the mailboxes. But if I've got a bunch of little kids and I see, you know, fire and Fire Expo, I go. But if I know they're bringing in the Lifeflight helicopter, I guess it's not Lifeflight, but you know.
It was, it was Lifeflight helicopter.
It was Lifeflight.
University view, Tom.
It was Lifeflight, yeah.
Okay, so anyway, I mean, if I know they're bringing in a helicopter, then I'm like, oh, I should take my kids down for that.
The K9s were doing their thing, that was cool.
So, I mean, I think that we could do a better job marketing to families, you know, the, how, what kind of fun, cool things come, because it is fun. And I mean, one year they did the fire trailer, you know, that you got in.
Smoke.
And one year they, they did a thing where you strap yourself in and they do, like, replicate a car crash and you see how important seat belts are. And those things really are cool for families. And I think sometimes we don't realize, people in the city don't often realize how family-oriented and fun activities that their kids would enjoy.
Well, there was kind of a few things going on too that, you know, there were some graduation things. There was one funeral at the church, there was a couple of bridal showers.
It was a wild Saturday.
So it's crazy and.
Yeah, right, there were other things, I mean.
So there was a lot, and normally we had originally said it was going to be on the fifteenth, which wouldn't conflict with at least graduation weekend, right? But I think.
No, I agree, but I am just saying that I think we can do a better job advertising how fun it is, a fun family event.
Yeah.
So, so we will try our best, Craig, to support you better next year on that.
So.
But I, anybody that attended, I've gotten great feedback, so I think it was really good.
One, one.
Yeah.
One, one piece of feedback is I, I am a little concerned over the use of the citywide sirens to announce that.
I did get a few texts about that, why are the sirens going?
I'm thinking we need to be super careful that we don't turn those into crying wolves and announcements. Those really, I mean, we get the first Saturday of the month. I think most of the residents are used to that. I am, I am concerned over using those city sirens for things that are not emergencies outside of that first Saturday.
I, I think that's a very valid concern, but also in defense, I, I think that it didn't go the way they had planned it to go. I think that. Nine-one-one dispatchers didn't come across with the announcement. It was just the sirens.
Sirens went with no announcement, not seeing people out.
So they tried, they did it the first time, it didn't work, they did it the second time, it didn't work. Fortunately, they quit. But it, that was not according to plan, but I think Dave's concern is very valid.
Yeah, we.
I would say, even if the announcers had worked well, I would have concerns over.
I know, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, I'm just saying that, that it was supposed to be different than it was.
Can I, can I just, so I'm embarrassed to say that, this was news to me, I didn't know the sirens went off.
Twice.
I was, but this validates that, you know, when we actually had the fire, the siren thing didn't work quite right, because we're depending on those dispatchers.
That's right.
And they just, it, well, there are too many of them. And we.
Long they rotate.
Right, well, that's, I mean, there are too many of them, and yeah, you, you don't know who's going to be on. Right. But still, anyway, but. Well, so, so this is why we tried to go to such a simple alert system that is either the sirens go off on the Saturday with the message that's pre-recorded that says this is a test, or they just go off. And if you just hear them going, then you better get on the, on your.
But that was part of the problem because.
I agree, I agree, but that's what I'm saying.
The siren went off, there was no, there was no notification on Facebook or anywhere.
I know, because I didn't know they were going off either, so I started getting all these texts.
Who authorizes this?
Yeah.
Yeah, my phone started ringing immediately.
But was it our fire? Yeah.
Yeah, see, I didn't know either, so my phone starts going ballistic and I'm like, it must, it's, it's just the fire expert, it's just the fire expert. Yeah.
So.
And I did get that.
I got that too.
Which is what made me realize that the sirens were no big deal. But again, it's.
Right, I agree. But what I'm saying is, this, to me, confirms the wisdom in our system now that just says, we only have, this is a test, or the sirens going off, because as soon as you add any more complexity, it's just too difficult for dispatch to keep track of that with our little city and so, but I agree, I, I'm totally agreeing with you that we probably ought to never use them except in.
Well, the other thing is, I mean, to me, to me, it's, it's, we ought to adopt the protocol pattern, not the exact protocol, but the pattern that they use for Amber alerts. So you never, you never post an Amber, Amber alert unless you have certain people in the know that, hey, this is about to go out. And that way, you have that communication kind of built in. And I just, I just think we need to tighten that up a little bit.
So I would suggest that, that there's a bigger problem than what we've been talking about. And that is, is the staffing at nine-one-one. They are having a very hard time hiring and keeping staff and.
That has been chronic for about ten years, at least.
Well, and, and so, so I, as a representative of the city on there, needs, needs to bring this up. And, and that is, is that if we had a mix-up with this Fire Expo, what would happen if it happened on a real thing? And so we need to have a better process in place to, to, for them to do or for us to do, one of the two. They, they have to do better or we have to take it over.
Well, so, so that's, the, the process right now is in an emergency, all they're supposed to do is turn them on.
Right.
And no, and no recording, no voice, no nothing. And so that's, that's part of what our system is to help simplify it so that we avoid.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, so, but, but my point is, is that, is that the test didn't work right. And so we need to make sure that things work right in the future so that we can rely on it. We're, we're talking about only having the test and the real thing. And if either one of those aren't reliable, then the citizens. And if either one of those aren't reliable, then the citizens don't rely on it.
Right.
And it's like seeing, seeing the road construction sign and you drive for the next 20 miles and you don't see any construction. So you say, hey, why do I need to slow down? I'm going to keep going.
Right. I think if we just say, if we say that it's just emergency and the test, and the test is only on the first Saturday.
Right.
Then I think we're, we're good with that. I, yeah.
I recommend testing more because they're not using them right.
What do you mean?
That means we have a problem. We have a problem with the system. If, if they're not using it enough and they can't, even this one, the plan, talk to with the supervisor and still didn't, still didn't.
So the problem is.
Yeah, but what was the problem? Wait, but, but what was the problem with this?
He couldn't get the voice for it.
Yeah, but we don't ever want that. We only want the test voice.
So, so.
I think, let, let me talk to you about that. But I mean, I think the, the, right now, we're, what we're saying is we only have two scenarios to use those sirens. And one is the test, that comes with the recording and that's been functioning well. And the other one is no voice. If that, if that siren goes off and you're not hearing a voice, you better find out what's wrong.
You look at your evergreen connection.
So our scenario is, is that, that if there's a, a fire, we're not going to come on and say, hey, guys, this is a real thing.
Yeah, we're not.
Get on your pony and get out of here.
We're going to, it's basically going to be.
The sirens are just going off.
Yeah, then they'll look at their evergreen messages.
Or ask their neighbor or just get in their car and leave and then find out what's going on. But.
But to do that alone.
You have to be guaranteed that that's the only.
We have to have better coordination when we're going to let those things.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable. But I, I think that because I, I just think that one of the lessons we learned in the fire and then this last Saturday kind of helps is that simpler is better. You got to maintain it over time, over large numbers of people at dispatch, over, you know, and and, and over large numbers of citizens that we're trying to educate. So that the simpler the message, it's not going to handle every detail of every possible thing, but simpler works better because you can actually maintain it and do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking maybe we just, but let me talk to you about that. But I'm thinking.
Really, if, if they don't make, they don't know how to get the voice, it really doesn't matter.
Right.
Right.
And, and if every year then we realize, oh, and then we do training for them on how to get them to do it, then by the time it's the next year, it's too late again. And you know what I mean? And I just think, I think we're better served to just say, there's only two scenarios. It's a test in which you, you hear it and they've got it recorded. So it works well, it works smoothly. They're practicing every month. They know what they're doing. It's, it has worked well.
Basically, the mayor or myself can evacuate the city.
Or the IC, whoever the, like. That's true because I had to work with Dawn to do it when we evacuated before because you were offsite.
They had to call me on the radio.
Right. Cause you were.
One thing I think is important to note is that just like Chipper Day, we've been doing it long enough that people expect that we do it. We've been doing our siren test long enough that people recognize that first Saturday. If it doesn't go off by noon, I usually get, I don't know if it's the same with you guys, but I get a lot of phone calls saying, how come that siren hasn't gone off? Is there a problem?
Um, this last time it was eleven.
Yeah, it was, if it goes off too early or too late. And so people worry because they're, they're tuned in that that first Saturday, they want to make sure they've heard it. And I think that's a testament to our residents who are really cognitive of our, trying to keep them informed of an emergency. And so as long as we can keep it close to noon, because we send out the, the little announcement that says it'll be going off at noon. And then if it goes off, it doesn't go off at noon, that kind of freaks them out.
I don't think a lot of residents know that if they just hear the siren to evacuate the city.
We'll work on that.
Yeah, that's good.
Let's work on that.
That's a good message that we should get out. Okay.
I, I did too. I thought it was great.
Unfortunately.
Got a lot of good feedback from people, especially new citizens who have never been here before. There were several families that were brand new that thought it was true.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we got three, three.
That's great.
So, yeah, I, I've, I heard it was wonderful. I was sorry to have missed it. I had a other, a scheduling conflict with another duty that I had. So. But thank you. Thanks for all that work, Craig. And we look forward to it again next year. All right. Paul, Public Works Rhodes.
Nothing on Parks and Charles?
Uh, Doral, Doral's not here and he sent out. It's a little.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I bet.
Okay.
Um, the only comment is that with the lower bid on that one project, talked to Mark Silvane yesterday and he put out to the other members of the committee, I don't know if you saw that.
I did.
His suggestion is on West Lofer, let's wait to see until the other projects are done that we've authorized and see if other things like this happen and what that leaves us with. That gives Summit Creek a little bit of time maybe to coordinate on West Lofer and then let's tackle West Lofer.
Yeah, I, I was going to talk to you privately about that. I hate that idea. You don't hate it. I think it's just, I, the, the problem is what it does is it gives another opportunity for the contractor to leave and for us not to get the work done. We budgeted, we have the money for it. I don't, I mean, why are we not, why are we not moving forward? What are we trying to do? I got what his argument was. I just fundamentally disagree with it.
Well, I think, I mean, that's, I think that's the answer to your question is, I think he feels like we maybe could do a better job on West Lofer. If we wait and see what we've got, maybe he's got some different assets. But Corbin, I can tell something to say, so I'm going to.
You, you're not ready to even bid out West Lofer.
What's that?
You're, you're not ready to bid the work to be done on West Lofer. What are we waiting for? Authorization, I mean, an engineer's proposal and authorization from the council to, to turn the engineer loose. All this, everything that was done before was done without the information that the culvert was collapsing. And so that changes everything. So I, I thought that we, and, and I could be totally wrong with this assumption. We know what that means. Um, that when we voted last time to move forward with this, that we turned all spigots on to, to have that work go forward. Engineering work to begin, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Not on West Lofer. So what do we need to do? We need to get an engineer to look at it and give us a proposal. How do we get that to, to, to get started? We just tell the engineer to give us a proposal. Okay, let's do it.
You got to authorize funds to do.
Let's do it. Well, you don't know, you don't, I mean, the proposal doesn't cost you anything. But the proposal is going to identify all the problems, especially now that the culvert's collapsed or that we know that the culvert has collapsed or is collapsing. And then we'll go from there.
That seems like a no-brainer to get that ball rolling.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm surprised that, that our vote didn't turn all of those spigots on. And.
If we need to have another vote, then let's have another vote. But at least.
Yes.
We need to know, what do we need to do to get at least to a point that we know how much or a bid.
Right.
Yes.
So what engineer should we go with on this? Is this an LEI thing or is this a, um, Jones and Mill thing?
It doesn't matter to me.
I know, but what would you recommend?
Well, LEI has already done all the work. LEI has already, I mean, and I'm sure that there's. Right.
But that's okay. They can, they can.
Right.
More or less redo or augment the work that they've done.
So I, excuse me, I thought CMT had done some engineering work.
They just did, they just did the research and the study on the soils and the soils that are there. And that, that, that data was given to LEI? Correct. Okay. So LEI basically has everything they need except us telling them to go. To give us a.
Do it again. Yeah, guess.
Okay, well, let's, let's. Give us a proposal with the new information. Do, do we need to vote on this or do we just?
I don't think so because we're not committing any funds.
Yeah, you're not spending your money.
Can you ask them to do that?
Yeah, I'll talk to LEI tomorrow.
Let's do that. Get that moving.
Well, other than that, nothing else.
Okay.
Anything else?
On, on Rhodes. Okay, Carrie, Communications and Emergency Management.
Communications, we're, we'll be meeting again tomorrow. We're um, going to start doing the newsletters again and a few more people to help with that. It was a little overwhelming.
Yes.
Just a couple of people. So that will be happening. Um, so if you have specific things that you would like to put in there, please send it to me. It'd be great if we had little updates from each council person to put in there, just something short. Um, Emergency Management, um, I went to my first, uh, I'm trying to think of what they call it, OEC meeting today, a few hours with the, all of the emergency managers in the whole county. And they meet monthly and talk about different things that they do and resources. And I received a lot of great feedback of things that we might be able to do. Um, our deputy has been working, of course, uh, with, um, the county emergency manager, uh, just to see what they, they're, they've been reworking their management plan and they're willing to let our city kind of look at that and, and take what is useful for us. So the deputy and I and Craig will sit down and kind of go through that and, and determine what's necessary for our city. And then, um, I have quite a few trainings I need to do. So I'll be, got the, the log-on information for that. So I will, I will be going to get a new degree in Emergency Management. But it was, it's, it's, it's good. And there's a lot of things that, that we'll be able to use going forward. And we also talked quite a bit about, um, the avalanche area and there might be, I mean, we're responsible for cleaning out that debris ourselves. Um, but there might be some things that the county helps with or other cities if they're wanting to. So those are some things that we talked about as well.
Great. Okay. Thank you for your work on that. Um, Bob, volunteer projects and community events.
All right. So, um, I was contacted yesterday by a, a group that, uh, a ward that wants to go in and, and, uh, make sure that the Frisbee golf course is up to par. And they. Pardon me? Yeah. Up to par. Uh, they, uh, so they were going to go look at it. I don't know if we've done anything to that. And so.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So, uh, I'll, I'll have Grant Hanson get ahold of you to, to get that and I'll turn them loose on that a fifth. Everybody's okay with that.
And if we need new signage because the course has changed because of the mitigation, um, you would contact Zach Coulter. He made those signs and I don't know, um, you know, he probably has the original things in his, in his.
The artwork in that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and also if you'll let me know, uh, when it's, when we're ready to start considering the, the avalanche cleanup, since I hear that that's our responsibility, I will work with young single adults, take, see if we can get them here to, uh, be our mules. And so I, I, I have a good source there.
Yes, you do.
Um, they just talked about that, about doing more service projects last week. And so this is good timing for that. Um, working to try to get everything in place for Woodland Hills Days. We submitted a, a grant application for seventy-five hundred dollars from the state um, for, uh, to supplement, uh, Woodland Hills Days. And that money is, is basically being funded, uh, in conjunction with, this is a hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of statehood for Utah. And so, uh, when we do that, we'll have some activities about it. So, so that, if, if we win this grant, that'll give us about seventy, about seventeen fifty. For, uh, Woodland Hills Days. And so we're looking at, uh, at a lot of different activities. Um, I've got a.
And you got the dates, right? The tenth and eleventh of September, the dates for Woodland Hills Day. We always do the second, the second Saturday, the second weekend in September.
So that was, that was a question. Uh, September eleventh is the twentieth anniversary. And so do we want to do it that weekend?
I think it's a great celebration.
If we do, if we do it that weekend, we probably need to add something in, uh, as a recognition of that. Uh, but that, that's a decision that I would like to get input from the council on what, what they think. Uh, that's, whether that's a good day.
I think, I think it, I mean, I think we should hold it there because people can plan ahead if we are predictably always on the same weekend of September.
Okay, I've, I've.
I think we've done it that for at least twenty years on that weekend.
Okay. So we've, we've got, I've got, uh, a second feeler out for a chairperson. I've got a couple of people that have said no for the chair, but they would be, uh, on committees. And so, um, I'm hoping I'll get something. I'll probably get a, get a chair and a co-chair.
They have somebody who wants to serve on that. I have somebody who's new in the city who asked if they could serve on the committee. I don't know if they want to be chair or co-chair, but they do want to.
Okay. And so, um, yeah, we'll, we'll take any of those. Uh, we will probably, right now, the plan is, is because this is going to be a bigger event, we will be doing it at the park because I just don't think there's enough room here uh, for all of the things that we want to do. Um, and so, um, so that's moving forward.
My two cents on that is just remember that it, there isn't a, a significant cost moving it to the park to hold everybody because we have to rent a lot of tables, chairs. There's implement weather, weather tents. Um, there's also no electricity and there's toilets.
Some of those things in that we would, uh, ask people to, to, uh, to bring canopies. And I've, I've got in some, um, some requests to identify what it would cost to, to rent a, uh, a canopy that would hold a hundred people.
It was about, from the time we had it up there, we did it the one, one or two years up there. And I remember, right, Chris, if you're still on, it was like a ten thousand dollar difference.
Okay, Bob, I'd be happy to get with you and we can talk about what, what, what has been done historically, what the experiences were, and it'll help you make better decisions.
Because we're, we're, we're looking, uh, we've, we've already reached out and uh, with, with this extra money, we're looking at providing dinner for three hundred people.
Okay, well, here, here's the other thing. Traditionally, SESD has sponsored their dinner.
On Friday night.
It's a hot dog dinner, but we can talk to them. They will sponsor some, so I can talk to you about that too.
Okay.
Help you out because I apologize that you didn't.
Carrie's notes, uh, so that we can do that because we're, we're moving forward.
Yes. And I apologize that you didn't already have all that information. I should have worked with you.
And then.
Bob?
Uh, Corvitz.
Keep, keep in mind that years ago, we had canopies and we got rid of them all because the insurance, because of the liability with the insurance company. The insurance company insisted, if I remember right, the insurance company insisted that you rent
We rent the tent.
Canopies for liability.
Yeah, I, you know, um.
Chris.
I think that's, that's changed a little bit. They're just really worried now about bouncy houses.
They are, because we were, we was considering that.
If we do a third-party bouncy house, that's different than us doing ourselves. Those are the notices I get now from the insurance company for special events is bouncy houses.
And I have all that information of who we've rented from in the past, who has given us discounts because we've used their services long enough.
Well, but.
But I will give all that to you.
And, um, we, we have some people out looking at a tribute band to, to come in and entertain us while we have dinner. So there's another committee that I have, it's not a committee, it's an ad hoc group that I've, that I've got up and running, kind of. Uh, it's called Community Development. We're looking at, uh, viability, financial viability of the community. And we're, uh, we're looking at a lot of different things. I've got some, I've got a request into Chris to get some data to help us understand what is, what's going to work and what is it going to work and what, and how, how big is, how big is the mountain going to be to be able to uh, stop tax increases and maybe cut them, cut them back with, uh, with other sources of, of income. We've got developers on our committee that are residents or. We've got developers on our committee that are residents or associated with the city and we're looking at, at a lot of different things. There's a lot of activity going on right now with Davis Ranch and we need to be moving fast and we need to be looking at the infrastructure of what it's gonna take if, if we're able to do some of these things.
Great. And then also didn't you have somebody that was going to, that was offering to replace our broken soccer poles?
Okay. Yeah. So the lumps who moved in, built, moved in across the street from the, the park, saw the busted up soccer goalies, they called to talk to me and asked if, if they could buy new ones themselves. And I told them they could and they, in return, got rid of the busted ones because they were just big poles there that were just waiting for some kid to get hurt on as they climbed on them. So they've been gotten rid of and the new ones have been ordered.
Right. Great. Thank you to the lumps.
Lovely. And thanks for kind of spearheading that one, Bob, for being the one to work with them on that. All right. Thank you for all your efforts. Dave, Planning Commission, Finance Committee and Public Works Water.
So if it's okay, we've kind of covered Planning Commission a lot.
Yes, we have.
Do we need any more there, Wayne? Okay.
We just always want to provide you this opportunity if you need it.
Yeah, thanks. Finance Committee, so Finance Committee, we had a really robust discussion that was really quite good. The, the one that I want to highlight, although we had a great discussion on a new fire engine with Chief Northrup, but the one that I kind of wanted to highlight was the purchasing and installing of security cameras. So we have gotten a bid from one company and honestly, it's a really good bid and we, the entire Finance Committee loves it. This guy knows what he's doing.
Do we have to go out RFP?
Huh?
We have to go out for a bid on it?
RFP?
RFP?
We don't believe so. It's under the 50,000. So-
That's good. I like that.
However, in the, in the interest of making sure that we are getting a good bid, Newt is pursuing another bid, trying to get another bid just so that we have something to compare it against. But once they have that, then they'll be forwarding that recommendation onto the council. Anyway, that was, that was probably the biggest one. Now, the other one that I want to mention, so water, just really quickly with, so I went to the Sumoa meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Interesting bunch of folks.
Isn't it?
They know their water super well. Oh, my goodness.
They know every drop of that water.
But as I understand it, we have signed the letter needed to relinquish our shares and they are in the process of reallocating those shares that were assigned to our city. The other thing I will say is that they had no problem reallocating it. So I think Springville, Mapleton, Spanish all wanted it.
Yeah, because they're, they're expanding and they want that secondary water source of the irrigation water and they weren't having enough. So they were really thrilled that we were not using it.
Yeah. So anyway, that, that is taken care of at this point.
And, and just a comment that I think Mark Brackman is serving us really well in that area.
He's really good.
So he just was, had a, another emergency and that's why you were, you were willing to go for him.
The good news is I wasn't elected as president because that's what they were doing that night was electing chair and, and vice chair and I was like, mm, 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 mm. Nope.
I'm not actually on the committees.
So anyway, it was, it was, it was great. Now, on to what I really wanted to talk about. So we've been in the process of evaluating and you may have seen, I noticed Paul's been using this tonight.
Yeah, me too.
The online agenda. So the goal of the online agenda, let me, let me just state the high level goal, but then I'm gonna be pretty blunt. The high level goal is just simply to make the agendas more accessible and, and quicker to generate. But here's been the biggest problem. I've now been creating, I personally have been taking minutes for the Finance Committee for the last year. And I just take them and then I send them on to Mike and then they get approved at the next meeting. I did find out that Jody is eventually uploading them to the state website once she gets them, but it usually takes a month to a month and a half. But I happen to know that we have other committees that I've never seen their minutes. That's illegal. So we have to make minute-taking more of a priority in all of these committees. If they are sponsored by the city, we are required by law to have minutes.
So which, which committees are we talking about? We're talking about the-
Trails.
Parks and, yeah, and I think they've been taking minutes.
Public Works has been doing some level of minutes, but it's usually a few.
Sherry Berger is the secretary for Trails. I assume that she's got minutes.
Yeah. But here's the problem. Where are they?
Right.
I get that she's got them, but where are they?
Yeah.
So-
I've sent it to Jody.
Okay. And that's good. That's a start. But let me explain. This software will allow us to do all of our minutes online in the cloud. It does require a little bit of training, as both Jody and I have found out. But I have to tell you, I took the minutes for the Finance Committee this last week when we met on that and it was wonderful because when I was done, I was done. And that was a really huge thing. So, and then the other thing as far as residents are concerned is that they can go to one URL and they can see all of the minutes. But we can also set it up so that we have different departments and then you can have minutes focused just around like the water, Public Works, City Councils, Planning Commission.
Allows you to use PDS and all the other, you know, like our, our revised budget can be included in that packet and all that kind of stuff?
As a PDF.
As a net, as an attachment. So anything you propose during the meeting has to be uploaded later as an attachment or prior to the meeting as an attachment. So there'll still be, I think what you mentioned, that the minutes that will come following the meeting right away will just be a draft. It'll be a high-level synopsis.
So, 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 so what you're saying, David, is that there will be one URL that will have, we can give to the residents, they can look for whichever minutes or agendas that they're looking for if they, if they're interested. They would see the draft copies first that were uploaded and then when the, the approved copies were there, the draft would come off and the approved would stay on? Or would, would they have to be searching through draft and approved?
No. And, and so let me actually back up even further than what you just said.
Okay.
Because the way this software works is it is very much the way you would a Google document or something like that. But it also has this ability to create what's called a template. So you can have a template, so like city council meeting, second week, city council meeting, fourth week. You can have two different templates. And then you can create an instance of that template that will, and then you say that meeting is going to take place on May 25th and it's going to start at 6:00 PM. That automatically populates a whole bunch of stuff within the template. And then you go in and you can add some things to the template. So you can add agenda items, you can add custom fields and so forth, and you can add attachments, which is what Jody did for tonight's meeting. So now then, the other thing that you can do is you can then generate a packet, a meeting packet, and it combines all of those into one big, huge, long PDF, which is what we're all, which we're viewing it. And, and it's all in one place. The neat thing is for the residents is they also have that same ability to either download the one packet or to click on the individual links, however they want to do it.
Okay, good.
But just a minute. The cool part is that it has a specific start time and date. Now, they all, this same company also does website software. This is newer to their portfolio, so they haven't been doing it for as long, but we have agreed to do a one-year trial of their website software. The place where it really comes in kind of cool is that it integrates with these agendas. And you might think, well, who cares? We can do that on our WordPress site. But they'll actually populate our event calendar based on the agendas that we have proposed. So the, it doesn't mean, you don't have to do double work. You don't have to create the agenda here and then go populate the event calendar here. It's all one thing. It's just at the same time. The other thing is that you can, once the agenda is, is proposed, that's the term that they use.
Right.
Then that means it's available for the public to see. The meeting has not happened yet. You then go into the meeting, you add the minutes and it will automatically put a draft watermark on the document. There's only one document. And you'll see the draft, you'll see the minutes as they were at that moment in time. And then at some point, we can change that to accepted and then that's when we've approved it in our meeting and then that takes the watermark away and it essentially locks the document in place as that's what was approved and accepted.
And they're all PDFs, though they can't be fiddled with too much by somebody.
You can add PDFs.
I know you can.
Oh, yeah, but I'm in there.
You'd have to do some, you have to do a little more.
You can't just inadvertently do it.
Yeah, it's not quite as easy as a Word document.
Right.
But yeah, you can.
Yeah.
But regardless, this is all stored in the cloud and so it just makes, it's so we don't have to worry about storage, which has always been a problem with our WordPress instance.
Yes.
We don't have to worry about, about updating or any of that. We do still, I want to make this clear, we do still need to send it to the state, but what we do is we send them the packet and say, okay, this was approved, here you go. And then the state has everything. So it's going to make things much, much cleaner that way.
So on the website?
That's not totally correct.
Okay. Give us the totally correct version.
If it's a zipped file, you cannot upload a zip file onto the state website. You have to upload the files manually, each one. Also, it only accepts a file that's of a certain size. So if the file's too big, you're going to have to break it up on the state website.
Okay. And that's fair, but the generate, it'll generate a PDF, so as long as the PDF's not too big, meaning we need to talk less or have fewer attachments, then we should be okay.
Right.
Okay. And that, that's fine. So we're meeting with this company tomorrow.
What's the name of the company again?
It's called Town Cloud.
Oh, Town Cloud. Yes, you've told us that before. I just couldn't, I just couldn't-
Town Cloud.
Cloud.
They're based out of, they're based out of Logan, although they have websites. They, they work with cities all over.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're meeting with them tomorrow and the objective will be to set up the websites part. We've already done the agenda part. We've been testing that and using that. We're setting up the, the website part, but we are not going to take over the city's URL yet.
Okay.
We'll come up with a, like a new dot woodlandhills-ut.gov or something like that, some other URL. And we'll go through the setup, we'll go through the training and we'll do as much as we can and then we'll let, we'll send that URL out and allow you guys to give feedback on this works, that doesn't, whatever.
Make sure it's user-friendly to us.
So actually, I got a phone call from Jake at Town Cloud today.
Okay.
Spent a little longer on the phone with him than I had originally planned, three hours. But he gave us a sneak preview into what he's put together for the city on the website so far. And it's pretty cool.
Good.
We do need, if anyone has a picture that's got a resolution, I know I was gonna reach out to Kaisa Lee, that's a little better than what we currently have. I think it's 100, 1,500 by something, but-
This is the logo? The logo was horrible.
I know. But it's, no, it's just the picture that would appear on the front page.
So Kaisa's good and Ted.
Ted McCoy is another one and I thought maybe Zach might have one, but I thought I'd reach out to those three and see if we can get a better resolution pictures, a few of them that we can add to the site.
I'd have people offer to create a logo for it.
But we have made sure that the new website, because this wasn't on there and so we went through and did it with him, does include the camera at the city center live.
Sweet.
So there's a live webcam.
So, so, so one, one thing I was wondering, so right now, before we switch over the website, would we keep this one URL about the public documents on our current website? And then when we switch over and have this new website, then that would just be incorporated into it? And then what is the cost after the year trial?
So here's the good news. The cost is $99 a month, which we're already paying $50 a month-
Yeah.
-for our current site. So we're basically increasing by $49 a month. Now, the agenda software is $3,000 a year. So that's a little heftier, but at the same time, that's, you know-
Agenda minutes. You're talking agenda and minutes combined.
You're talking the thing that most of our residents have been complaining about, that they don't have this information. And the reality is it's, I'm gonna say it's our fault, but good heck, it's just we have it too, we make it too hard to do these agendas and minutes. So our office staff is spending so much time doing it. So the hope is that this will simplify their work so that we can do a better job of getting the information out.
So we're looking at $3,600 a year?
Yeah.
After the first year?
So the thing that I, I would also just say, again, you know, our current website's written in WordPress and it has served us very, very well and it's a good, it's a good website software and it works very well. The problem is it's a little bit like needing to drive a semi-truck to the grocery store to pick up groceries. It's just a little too powerful for what we really need. Now, what does that mean? That means that this new website, we may at times experience some frustrations because it doesn't have all the bells and whistles that we were maybe used to. But the reality is we weren't using those bells and whistles except in very weird cases. So I think, you know, my goal has been to kind of move us to a more sustainable communication device that doesn't require as much work by anyone really, including our office staff, especially our office staff, but allows them to get, do their job adequately and also communicate with the residents adequately. So that's, that's kind of the, the balancing act that I'm trying to get to.
And if it's on the cloud, then it's probably something that this company, if we need to change things, can change quickly, not, not as cumbersome as the old one.
Yeah, and I've already had conversations with them and said, okay, that's a bug, that's a bug, that's a bug, you know, that's what I do. And so, and they're willing to fix it and they've already addressed some of the issues. So anyway.
So we were looking at upgrading our webpage a year ago and this $3,600 will cover four years of what that would have done for one. So not too bad of a price there. I would only recommend that these bells and whistles, that we make sure that we keep a good list of what it is we can't do during this one-year test so that at the end, we can go to them and say, hey, here's things we want you to add because this bell and whistle is important to us and this one's not.
Yeah, that would be-
And that's part of the reason why we'll, we'll send out the URL so you can take a look at what they've done and then you can give feedback.
So does it, it can accommodate our codification and the, the search words and everything in that as part of our website?
Well, those are just URLs to the other websites. So yes, we can add URLs to the other websites. That's not a problem.
To the other website?
So American Legal Publishing is hosting our code in a searchable format.
Okay.
We don't have to import that into us.
Oh, isn't that nice?
All we have to do is link to it.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
That's nice. That's nice. Well, so when will we get the, the tester to start playing around?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll be great.
Mayor, please bring up one point that I'd like to clarify. Um, landscaping around the, uh.
Yes.
City center. I've begun work on that one. And, um, Olson Nursery is supposed to be getting us an update bid on the, the plants and that type of thing. We've gotten two bids to do the, uh, detention pond and the rock wall. And I would, uh, recommend that we take the lower bid and initiate that so that work can begin as soon as possible, so that we can then start doing the other hardscape-type things related to, to the landscaping, so that come this fall, uh, we can do, uh, we can finish it up through a bigger project. Uh, so we can get that done sooner the better.
So is that adding that to the, the, the open, as we're opening the budget? Is that line item changing, opening that part?
This money is coming from, this money is coming from, uh, the bond, and there's about twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's already been budgeted.
Okay.
It's already been budgeted, yep. Work at the state.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Anything else from you, Dave?
No.
Okay. Um, transparency committee. I'm thinking maybe we should have Glenn do a thing on the gates with more information now. Because there, we've got longtime residents that are under some misunderstandings and have misinformation, and Summit Creek residents that have misinformation and misunderstandings. And I think it might be good to sort out some of the historical information and just provide it. So, so they're having the same conversation. They could be having, they could be having disagreements, but it's very hard to ever resolve a disagreement if you're coming from different subsets of information. So, um, you know.
I would like to see this one done with, uh, people other than the city council interviews and city, city staff, the beer staff. I'd like to, to see some, uh, comments from, uh, reasonable concerned citizens.
Okay.
On both sides of the topic.
Right, but part of it is that some of the facts need to be made more clear. We've got people in Summit Creek that have said, we're so frustrated because the city council approved this, and now you're changing your mind. And that's not really true. And then we've got people in the, other residents of the city that are saying we're violating state statutes, and that's not really true. And so we need, some of those things need to be set clear, made clear. But yes, I think having some input from other people is great.
An umbrella, and then, then a couple of things. And I'm sure you can kind of say, hey, you don't want to talk about that because that's really not accurate.
Okay, right.
Well, maybe review it for accuracy after he's written it, because I know that's something that has come up a couple of times.
Yeah, we, we have that opportunity.
Yep.
Yep.
That's part of the process, yeah.
So, but, yeah, we need to. But I just think that that could be very helpful because we've got two groups of people operating from, both of them from some misinformation. And it just, it's hard to have a reasonable conversation when you're starting from different places, and neither one of them's quite accurate.
I would call them two different silos, and one, and both silos could be called the leaning tower people.
Right.
They're kind of more.
So, um, and then we could have him do a, also a transparency report on the water project, kind of explaining what Corbett said, you know, just explaining that the, the developers are, you know, um, have committed to come back and fix everything when they're done, and kind of what the time frame right now is. And, I mean, maybe, maybe even the information, a lot of that information that Ted sent to us this week, that just kind of tells how the different pieces are in different, are parts of different projects that really all work together in the city. But as far as, um, manage me, managing them and who's doing them, they're all kind of different, and they're trying to, we're trying to dovetail them all. So I think those are two things that I think he could do transparency reports that might be super helpful to people in the city.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I know that, uh, the contractors are soliciting work to do on private driveways, which is a separate topic. That ought to be included some way in, in the transparency information as well, to let people know that. And maybe a contact number if those who wanted to have that done, could, could pursue that. And to let them know further too, that that's not impacting the city work that, that we're doing.
That the city's not paying for it. That's what people have asked me, is the city paying for it? And is it slowing down all the work in the city? Because if they weren't doing those driveways, they would be doing something else. And I said, no, that's a separate issue. As they're going along, as far as I know, Corbett told me it's different. Geneva is just reaching out to people along the way, saying, would you like to do this? We're here right now, we'll, we'll.
They'll bring in other crew to do it.
Yeah.
And we'll give you the.
And then because they don't have to haul everything up.
Holy cow, they can come to my house.
Yeah, so it'll be good.
It's been up your, your street, actually.
All right.
A whole bunch of them. You know, reach out to them.
And I'm working on the job descriptions for our brand-new jobs. And, um, so far, all the feedback I've received about both Lori and Marcy have been, it's been really good.
Me too. Lori and Marcy have done an excellent job.
So.
And I think we're really lucky to have them both.
Okay, anything that, um, we need to include on future agendas or that we need to talk about before we close this work session?
Can't think of anything now.
All right.
Probably ought to talk about, um, do we have an appetite for high-density housing?
What kind of high density are you talking about?
Condos, townhouses.
Okay.
Fifty-five and older complexes.
Raise an issue that I think we ought to. We haven't had a town hall in a while.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it would be good to have just an open town hall, not necessarily topic-related, but just, and maybe, maybe we do bring up different topics.
Well, we, we plan on having a town hall at some point when we get our concepts put in place. But I think that both of them would be important.
Well.
This one's going to be pretty, pretty full, I think.
So one of the reasons we haven't is clearly because of COVID and stuff. But I, to your point, yes, I'm anxious to have one. I think it would serve us well, it would serve the community well. We kind of traditionally had one the week of, I think it was the Tuesday following Woodland Hills Day. But that's what kind of we started, and then it has been kind of having a hard time because of COVID. But, um, I want to circle back to what you suggested a couple, a few meetings ago, that we need to define what we want to be as a community. Are we, are we a small town? Are we a, you know, we did, we need to define that. And I would love to do some surveys through, you know, email surveys, written surveys.
Yeah.
Uh, comments at the town hall meeting.
That's part of what community development, we're, we're going to be, we've been working, with getting, uh, some funding for this, and, um, also working with other planners who are, who are used to small cities and who understand the need to have that quality of life, defining who we are, and then seeing where sustainability happens and what feasibility is. So, um, Santa Quinn is in the middle of doing this right now. And they're, um, the person that they've hired, we've been in contact with about trying to, um, reduce it for the size of our city to see what we really, because we want to get, if we're going to do this, we want to have data that's actually beneficial to us. And, and that we can use going forward. So we're, we're kind of work, Bob and I are kind of working together on that one just to see what kind of funding we can get, and, and then what that means, um, going forward.
And I'm not against surveys. I just think we need to get face-to-face.
Oh, there's, there's going to, there's a multiple layers to this. Survey is just one tool. There's multiple tools that they use in this.
Yeah, there's like a four-step process. And they, they include surveys and town hall meetings.
Yeah.
Now, I'd just like to put in that one of the potential, I don't, um, friction points or whatever at this juncture is that when you're, when we're talking about high-density housing or commercial areas, kind of the area of town we're talking about is down at the bottom, right?
Not necessarily, but yes.
Okay, well, and so one of the problems is that the people that are the most anxious to do it and seem to have the vision for it, and the motivation, tend to be up higher in the town. And we're, and we're, well, and we're not getting a lot of input at this point from people that are living down there, right, adjacent to the areas we're talking about. Now, it doesn't mean that those people would be opposed to it necessarily, but there may be just a sense that those people over there want to tell us what to do with our land here by us. And so I, we've got to just be really careful that we make sure that it's not, there doesn't seem to be a sense of people over here saying, yeah, we want it, but not in our backyard. Because that's not what they're saying, but.
And, and we're, we're looking at, this in Kerry's backyard.
Perfect.
There's a, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of options right now. And, and right now, it's this big picture, right? And then we have to get the data that shows us, because if we're really looking at this as a sustainability for our city, because we know that property tax does not sustain our city, and we can't just keep coming back and needing these large chunks of money. And so by doing a feasibility study to even see what would it need? Is it, is it a density issue that we get property tax? Because if it's a density issue, you get more for a less spot. Or is it that we need some sort of commercial development to, to, um, you know, add to that? Or is it a combination? And then is that include some annexation possibilities? Does it include just that designated spot in our master plan, et cetera? So, so that's kind of all in the, in the works. And we're hoping that these professional planners that are willing to help us, that have done this with lots of cities that are in our same situation, could give us the tools and the metrics to have useful data so that we can make sound decisions going forward.
No, I totally agree. I totally agree, and I'm totally open to it. I just am saying that that is where we see, yeah.
Be sensitive.
And there, there's two scenarios that we, we need to pay attention to. And one of them is, um, scenario A is you have townhouses and condos, and Salem enjoys the taxes, and they control what they look like. Or scenario B is we have townhouses and condos, and Woodland Hills looks at, at what they look like and enjoys the taxes. So that, that's basically what it's going to be. It's, it's going to happen, and we're going to have to coordinate and partner with Salem to make this happen.
Right, which is also a good thing.
I had one other thing to, to just announce when we started talking about town halls, just so you can keep it on your future radar. August 31st, Congressman Curtis has requested a town hall in our city. He feels that it's an important part. And so we have scheduled that at the Summit Creek Clubhouse for 6:00 PM on August 31st.
Wow, also news to me.
Yep, it just happened. Just happened.
At 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
We ought to, ought to give thought to our election process and have a community meeting where those who are running for election can share their ideas and views and whatnot. Keep that in mind.
Yep. And, uh, since we chose the ranked choice voting, we won't know that until mid-August, who, who's going to be running. And, uh, we have the two council seats and the mayor's seat, so.
Eric, that, that'd be another good thing for a transparency newsletter, to let people have a better understanding of that, of that process.
I'll, I'll put that down for the regular newsletter.
Yeah, that would actually be better in the regular newsletter. Then maybe the transparency one could, um, anyway, we'll, we'll, yeah, that's great. All right, well, let us close this work session and give, do you guys want five minutes or 10 minutes?
Five.
Okay, so you have till 8:55, and we will begin our regular meeting.
Turn that up.
Oh, Jody. It's Jody.
All right. I will call to order the city council meeting for the city of Woodland Hills. This is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. Uh, I am here tonight with, I'm Mayor Wendy Gray, and I'm here tonight with council members Malkovich, Ottley, MacArthur, and Pratt. Council member Keniston is excused this evening. We will begin with a request. Bob Ottley, if you would lead us in the pledge, and David Pratt, too, would offer his vocation.
Please follow, please pay the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be gathered this evening on the business of the residents of Woodland Hills. We pray that thou would bless us with discernment and good decision-making, that we might know the best way to move forward. We are so grateful for all of the work that goes in on behalf of our city. We're grateful for our employees. We are very thankful for all of their efforts. We're grateful for all of our volunteers and our citizens, those who work so hard to help make our city everything that it can be. And we pray that thou would bless the families that live here, especially those who might be struggling at this time. They might receive blessings from thee and receive blessings from their neighbors. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, I apologize, I just realized my microphone wasn't on. I don't, um, just to repeat what I said at the beginning. Uh, well, first of all, thank you, Bob Ottley and David Pratt, for the opening. This is the city council meeting for Woodland Hills, Tuesday, May 25th. We are excusing council member Keniston, who is out of town. Um, we can receive public comment, general public comment in our meeting at this point. It will be limited to two minutes or less per comment. Jody, do you have anybody that is interested in giving public comment? Okay, seeing no raised hands, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of April 27th, 2021. I'm open to a motion.
I, so moved.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Ottley and a second from MacArthur. Any question or discussion about approval of this consent agenda? Okay, since we're all here, I don't take a roll call vote on all these things anymore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and carries. Okay, business and discussion issues. Number one, this is the resolution appointing an alternate to the planning commission. And Chairman Franson has told us that, um, has suggested, and we've asked John Wallace to serve as our alternate planning commissioner.
I move that we approve John Wallace as an alternate member of the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Ottley and a second from Pratt. Any discussion or questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes and carries. Number two, this is a proposed change to the city code Title X, adding a section on the fire hydrant requirements.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2021-10.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from MacArthur and a second from Malkovich. Any questions or discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and carries. Number three, this is the proposed change to the city development and construction standards, 2.8.6 fire hydrants.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's true. We, I forgot. We, I forgot we fixed that.
Okay, so I don't need to talk about.
Okay, all right, then on to item number four, the proposed change to city code Title 8-5-1, water requirements and policies.
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 2021-11.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from MacArthur and a second from Malkovich. Any further questions or discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and carries. Number five, the proposed change to city code Title 10-11-2A and 10-11-2B, accessory buildings, parentheses, outbuildings.
So I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this with the addendum to the ordinance that just adds that there, if not otherwise listed, we are using the R1-1 zoning rules for any zone not listed specifically.
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we restate that a little bit more succinctly for Jody? So how about, um, with the addendum that any ordinance, I mean, any zone not specified will comply with the R...
1-1 zoning requirements.
Yep. Is that a little better for you, Jody? Okay. All right, so I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from MacArthur. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, our, Jody, do you have that? Are you sure you have that all clear for us to sign?
So, did you say?
Not yet.
Okay.
Any questions or discussions?
Okay, but you've got it, you've got what you need to make it clear for you. Okay, sorry, Bob.
Did you ask for questions?
Now I am.
Now you are?
For any questions or discussion?
I'm just looking at the table. There's only two data points that are different. Everything else is the same. What if we just said that everything except R1-19 and R1-1PUD, and I guess R1-2PUD follows the table with those two data point exceptions? It simplifies it.
So my, my thoughts, I'm not sure, though, that we want to, because I think that especially if we're going to look at developing and doing that, we may want to differentiate down the road, and, and to tear it back apart might be hard.
Okay.
Just to list it.
All right, I'm a pushover.
That's a good question. All right. Any other question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes and carries. Number six, the proposed change to city code 10-6-4, the time to appeal. The cha- this change would align city code more closely with state code.
So I'm going to move that we accept ordinance number 2021-13, and maybe just...
Wait a minute, it's city code 10-6-4.
Sorry, this is ordinance number 2021.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Just with a comment that I understand the concerns expressed in the letter that we all got, but I think that we can mitigate those. The fact that this came from our legal counsel's recommendation, the fact that it came from the planning commission as a recommendation, fact that it, it, it's, it's even less stringent than state code currently. And, and I get the fact that the state has a lot more resources than we do to comply quickly. But whether it's 14 days, or 16 days, or 17 days, I, I don't know that it's going to really make a big difference. And so 14 days is fine with me, so there's my reasoning.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion from MacArthur and a second from Malkovich. Any other questions or discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and carries. We have a phantom number seven that we're going to skip. We're going to go to number eight, the proposed change to city code Title 10, adding a section on architectural and landscaping standards.
I move that we table this.
Okay.
Send it to the planning commission.
Okay, that will be tabled and...
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, number nine, awarding of the contract for road funding improvements.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Well, who do we want to award it to?
Oh, uh, to, uh, Geneva.
Okay, so...
Geneva.
So Dave Pratt is moving that we make that award to Geneva, and a second from, oh, MacArthur?
And we move post haste.
Yep. Okay, any other questions or discussion?
That was mine.
Yeah. Ottley says move post haste. All right, all in favor? Wait, pardon?
I made the motion.
Motion from Pratt, second from MacArthur. Post haste boot from Ottley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and carries. Number 10, the proposed change to city code 10-8-4F, omitting the reference to stories.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from Ottley. Any other questions or discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and carries. All right, uh, number 11, the request to provide culinary water. Um, I think that we decided that, I mean, we got the information, but we're, I don't think there's any action that we need to take as a council tonight. There's any other comments that you want to make or questions you have? Now is your chance.
Do we, do we ever need to make?
Well...
Is there ever an action for that?
Possibly because...
I mean, because I'm okay with moving forward with this. I thought we had a good discussion around annexing, but I almost find that to be a next step.
One of the things that we...
I want to make sure we don't need to...
Okay, one of the things that we may need to decide is, are we going to have different rates or, uh, um, different cost for people that are not citizens of the city as compared to people that live in the city?
What?
If we're going to service somebody outside the city, do we? So we...
In this case, are there any other? The only funds that we would be using to support this would be the water fund, and the water fund they would contribute to. So if that is true, then I don't think we need to consider anything else. If it was...
Right.
Uh, like roads or something like that, maybe we would need to.
Or for subsidizing or something.
Right, out of our general fund, but I agree. I agreed, and I'm not suggesting that we do, but I, but we ought to at least consider it before we start service, serving people outside the city. Is that something that we need to? I mean, maybe just an upfront cost because of extra legal fees that we... So that's just something that we might need to consider, and that's why we might need to take further action.
So, so will there be extra legal fees? That they're, they're, they've agreed to pay, uh, the hookup fees, right? They've be, agreed to, to connect to the service that's being provided by Robert Nelson. And so are there any other expenses that we as a city? Like, who, who pays for the, the water meter?
They will.
They will.
I mean, basically what we're saying is we're saying we're going to provide water service to them under the same conditions that we would anyone.
Right.
So they would have to pay the connection fee, they would have to pay for, you know, pipe.
We just, I just think we need to just do our due diligence and make sure there's not something that we're missing. I don't think that we are, but I just think it's a question that ought to be asked to make sure.
Putting it to legal counsel to ask if there's any concern or...
Or I think, um, even maybe just checking with other cities. If they serve outside their city, do you charge extra fees? And why? You know, what are they and why do you do it?
I'm just kind of laughing because, like, you know, pace and drug are really along the line to service us.
Yes, they did.
And we're grateful for them doing that.
Right, right.
But, I, anyway, I...
I just think it's a...
This is a little tiny water pipe.
Right.
Compared to what they have to do.
Right. And this is not, this one is not a big deal, but perhaps there's down the road one that might be. Uh, anyway, I just want to make sure we ask the questions we need to ask before we do it.
Okay, so who is going to ask those questions? And when can we bring it back so that we can get an answer to these folks?
I don't know, that's a good question. That's a good question also to ask.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be voted on.
No, I don't think so.
I don't.
I think Corbett, will you just, um, make sure that there's nothing that we're missing? And we'll check, I'll check, we'll check with our legal counsel, make sure there's not anything we're missing. And then, I mean, I'm assuming it's not going to be a problem. But I, you just asked why we would need to have a council vote, and that's the, the only thing I can think of that might be a problem.
I would, um...
Trying to, you know, like unintended consequences are...
Yeah.
Something that I...
I, I think if those things get answered satisfactorily, we ought to just go ahead and give the go-ahead for it to take place.
Okay.
Especially if we don't have to vote on it.
Okay. That sounds great. The more workable we can be with people, I, they're better, so. All right, anything else that we need to...
We do get a lot of, of, uh, maybe it's not Cory, but we do get a lot of, uh, support from the Hyatt family.
We, oh, we, they're wonderful.
So we're not, we're not losing anything here.
No. Nope. Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a, I have a subsequent question.
Okay.
I'd like to, uh, ask how we deal with it, and that is what Carrie brought up earlier about hauling dirt up... Deep Forest, thank you. Went to break dead there. So, so have we agreed that once this water project phase is over, that we are going to haul dirt someplace else? Is that the consensus that we had in the working session?
Well, that's what I was wondering, because I don't think, I think they're, well, they're, they're not on anymore, but some of the residents are, although they were really concerned last week, and we, and Vancom has top, has brought the water truck up and is keeping on top of the dirt. I think there, it's not just the dirt. I think it's the constant track, traffic on that little, that little cul-de-sac that, you know, those trucks are loud and it shat, it rattles their house. And, and, you know, they've been doing it for, um, you know, nine months now in two different projects. And I think we should just be considerate of that. And if there is an opportunity to take it elsewhere, then we should.
So I guess what I'm kind of saying is that I, I think we ought to go with what Corbett said earlier about making sure that, uh, the road gets watered. And, uh, that we just kind of have a basic agreement that after this phase is over, that we go someplace else.
Okay.
Is that reasonable, Corbett?
I mean, and I think that's part of it is that...
You're, you're the steward over that money.
But, I mean, we, we can acknowledge that we saved a quarter of a million dollars by having that go up there. I mean, that's a significant savings for our, our little town. And we, we probably got a little bit extra water line because of it.
I'm not sure that we got extra water line, but we got extra paved roads.
Yeah, we got extra...
Would that be accurate?
Whatever. You got more, you got more work done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and is there a place at the, at the salt shed that there's place for, for dirt? I didn't think so. Yeah, so I guess it's just trying to see where the balance is between, because it is a significant savings if we, we continue to haul up there and...
It's savings on the transportation of labor and time.
And roads.
Saves on the road.
Well, it depends on where they're coming from on the roads, because they're, right now, they're coming all the way from the bottom of the hill up, but, um...
And if we get the, the, the funds to pay for road, the road improvements to repair.
I think it would only be a certain spot, it wouldn't be all over.
Yeah, you just have to be on whatever line they, we'd have to prove that it's damaged.
Because they come in and they, they do videotape everything prior, so that they know.
If you do that mitigation of the tank, you're going to haul 20,000 truckloads down that dirt road, down Deep Forest, Eagle National, the Nile Drive, 20,000 truckloads.
But if we keep hauling dirt up there, it's going to be 20,200, or whatever, right?
If somebody else is doing it.
Yeah. Yeah. So that is a consideration, too. And that, that project probably won't be starting for another two to three years, so... But as we know, that goes by in a flash.
Mm-hmm.
So are you saying no more dirt up to the tank?
I don't know if we're saying that quite yet, but...
Well, I think, I think that we can continue to haul it through...
Phase one.
The, the, phase one and phase B, what it's...
Two B.
Two A, whatever it is that we're, the, the two that are under contract. When, with this, with the current contract is done, we then negotiate a new hauling.
We reconsider, yeah.
Well, and it might be worth our effort for, for those of you on water and roads to have a sit-down meeting with those residents that live right there and just talk it over with them and talk to them about the, that, those pros and cons of, of having it up there, because maybe their mind would change if, if they knew that water trucks were going to be there. There wasn't, the increased damage to their road was going to be fixed, that it was a significant savings.
City road?
But, well, it's a city road, yes.
Here's the problem, Jody, I can't promise any of that.
I know, we can't promise it, but, but just explaining it to them, right?
But explaining what? I can't explain anything to them.
That it would be a significant cost reduction, but they also then would need to know that, uh, because that is, that's fact. We do have the fact of how much money we have saved in phase one.
Okay, fair enough. But again, I can't control how often a water truck goes up there. I can't, I can't stand there and monitor it, and I can't, I, I mean, that their road is going to be repaired? I don't know.
I, I'll go back to the ones that we made last, last weekend, and we, or last time we met, and that is that let the data tell us when Deep Forest needs to be repaired.
I mean, I 100% agree with repairing every road that we possibly can with the budget that we have.
Yep.
But Deep Forest is not on the top three list.
Oh, no. No, and I think it wouldn't be repaired for another three years, at least until the other trucks are finished. You know, after the, the watershed ops project. And, and I think that's just being open with them that that road has at least four, four to five years before it's on the list. But then coming in and just letting them know and making sure with Ted Corbett that maybe that next contract says you will water every day, right? Um, and, until the, until conditions are that it doesn't need to be. I mean, in the winter, you obviously don't water. But I, just little things like that, I think, could, um, make a big difference with those that are, that are feeling that they're, you know, they're not being heard.
But there's a lot of issues with that project.
Yeah.
How, what's the city's needs for dirt up there?
None.
I'm not sure about that. With, if we talk about mitigation and, and helping the toolers out and, and potentially other properties up there. Now, if it reaches a point where, where we don't need dirt up there anymore, then that's, that's a whole different...
We don't need any dirt up there anymore, do we? No.
Corbett just says that, that with the dirt we have there, and we do this mitigation, we're going to haul off 2,000?
20,000.
20,000 trucks.
From up there?
Yeah.
From up there.
Extra dirt. So we've got more dirt than we need?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yep, we have more dirt than we need right now.
Right now.
If, if Corbett's point, let, let me just end that for Corbett. Corbett's point is that if we continue to haul the dirt up there, we get the discount of hauling the dirt up there. And when we do the mitigation, we get the benefit of the feds paying to haul it down. So we then save money upfront.
Yeah.
And so that, that's, that's the decision that we're, we're really making from a financial standpoint. Then there's the decision that we need to make from, uh, taking care of the residents.
I didn't realize we had enough dirt up there to do...
I didn't either till tonight. And so, you know, it's, it's a hard one because we, when we start, when we, when we move it from Deep Forest, it's going to go past somebody else's house. The difference may be that the Deep Forest is a cul-de-sac. They bought with the idea that they were going to be at the end of a cul-de-sac, and therefore it would be quiet and tranquil. People, the body on, on Woodland Hills Drive have other expectations.
I don't know, there used to be trees in the middle of the road, so.
Yep.
You know, it's...
They were right in front of my house.
You still have expectations.
Everybody hates construction. Nobody likes it. I didn't like it. I had 200 homes built past me in an orem. I hated it. I couldn't let my kids play in front of my yard because I was afraid of them getting run over. So I think we all understand that construction is terrible.
Yeah. I think having an end, an end in sight helps, I think, by communication with them about the number of trucks that, that it's in the contract, that the water tanks will be there, that eventually the road will be fixed after the other projects are finished. I think those are things that aren't shallow promises. I think those, that's just a way to help relieve some of the stress, because I think their stress isn't that, it's more that anxiety of not knowing, is it over this week? Is it over next month? Is it over next year? Where is it, where's the end date? And although we don't know that, we know it's between now and five years is when, when trucks will stop. But five years is a long time.
I would be happy to tell them that, that we're not going to do this anymore.
So, so I think, I agree that, I think that's the wrong thing to say, is that we're going to guarantee you something.
No, don't guarantee.
What I think we can say is that our current plan is that at the end of this contract, we will evaluate other places to go. And based upon the criteria of cost and inconvenience to citizens, we will balance those two things and do our best to make the best decision for everybody.
Well, and road damage, overall road damage too, because that, that's a significant part.
I consider that in the cost.
Well, we have the, we have the, the cost, the savings of the cost of the project is what we've, that's what we've designated now with the water project, with the roads. That was extended because we were able to put that dirt up there, and will that be the same with this next phase? And if that cost is significant, then I think it helps.
What, Corbett?
Are we not going to haul any more dirt up to the tanks aside from the water project?
We haven't decided that yet.
No, we're just talking about it.
You know, Corbett wants a yes or no, and I don't blame him.
Yes, I know.
Because he just has to point.
I know.
Well, he's going to go like this.
Yeah. Well, I thought you already did.
That's what I did.
So, so, you know, we've got, we've got several things on the table here. What do we feel like we need to do? I know, I think there's a good diversity in, in the thoughts.
Look, I think it's, I think it's fair for us to say, after phase one of the water project, we are not going to haul any more dirt up there. Honestly, I, I haven't been a strong proponent of hauling the dirt up there from the get-go, even with the mitigation project, although I have to admit that saved us a lot of money.
Yes, it did.
And it saved a lot of time, so I get it, I get it. Moving it to the park, I get it. But I haven't been a fan of it. I understand it, but that doesn't mean I like it.
I think we all agree with that.
I'd be a lot more comfortable with saying after this is over, we don't plan to haul any more dirt up there. But I say, I'm, I'm leery about saying we're not, because you never know what might happen, yeah.
Things change and everything, so.
But I think it's good to say that we don't plan to haul anymore.
Yeah, so I think in the phase two, phase whatever, 2A, 2B, 2C contract, whatever, whatever future, that we just tell when we, when we send it out to bid, that part of the bid is you got to find a place to haul the dirt. I'm good with that. I also don't want to haul the dirt onto West Loafer.
Right.
I think that's a bad move, or any other, you know.
Well, and depending on where the contractor finds a place, if, whether it's Salem or Payson or Springville or even Way Out, you know, that's where the cost comes in, because it will depend on, on how far they have to go, which is how much the truck will be. So you have the truck cost for the one hour round trip to, for every truck that has to haul. It's about a one hour trip out and back, and then you...
We, we know that. We talked about that.
Yep.
So what, what Ted mentioned earlier, if I, if I got it correctly, they ask the contractor in the process, where are you going to dump? And based upon that distance, they make an adjustment to the contract for waste haulage, or whatever they call it.
Just increases the price of the, of the overall project.
You, you, you get less bang for your buck.
You say 250,000, and you could have added 250,000.
Yeah.
And I would say even if things continue the way they are, even more, because you've got the, the savings of, of the inflation, because these are projects we probably couldn't have got to for two, three, four years. What are the prices like then? I mean, it's, it's a, fight that battle all, all year, every year.
I guess part of it is just balancing, trying to figure out where that balance is of the cost savings and, and then that, what you were talking about earlier, it's the inconvenience of it all. The inconvenience worst thing.
So when we talk about toolers, do we talk about toolers building house, trying to help them?
Yes.
As far as what we can, one of the ways that we have talked about is them hauling their spoils, their off-haul, up in the tank.
I suggest we continue with that plan, because it's not going up Deep Forest. It's going up the, the water tank road, and I think that my impression is that the surrounding neighbors are in support of helping the toolers whatever way we can. So I think that the, the neighbors will be happy with that.
As long as neighbors are. Their house will be finished by then.
I just hope that we get off dead center with the toolers, whatever that dead center is caused by. I just hope we can get off of it somehow.
Well, we've still never seen anything. They've never turned in a site plan, they've never turned a hot plan.
Engineering.
And so my, my comment's still the same, that we need to get off dead center whoever the dead center's caused by. I'm not trying to blame individuals.
Okay. Anything else?
We need, well, I wanted to ask first before that, do we have any need for talking about legal? We haven't talked about that for a while, and I know that before our next meeting is the court date.
But I don't really have any further information to give.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're out of here, folks. Thanks. Have a good night.
Adios amigos.